Return my mic on. Good morning, everyone. My name is Mike Terry. I'd like to welcome everyone here for this regular monthly Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission is an advisory board appointed by the Board of Commissioners. It's our duty to investigate every zoning application that comes into the county and every land use permit application. We then make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. They will hear these cases at their regular meeting, which is generally two weeks after this one, and the final decision will be made by them at that time. That BOC, Board of Commissioners, hearing is the fifteenth, I believe, March the fifteenth. So if you're here for a case today, you'll need to come back on the fifteenth and do this all over again. It'll be in this room at nine o'clock in the morning, just like this is. It's our custom to invite various members of the local clergy, and I'm not sure our pastor's here yet this morning. You see him? Yes, he is. There he is. I was gonna welcome you. I didn't know you'd slipped in. We're glad to have you here. But it's our custom to invite members of the clergy to come and speak to us, lead us in a prayer, and I'll ask Pastor, if you want to come on up. This is Dr. Wallace. Hope I'm pronouncing your name right. Is it Whelis?
Yes, sir.
Whelis, got it right on the first crack. He's from the Kennesaw United Methodist Church, and that's obviously in Kennesaw, Georgia. We're glad to have you with us. Come on up to the podium. When the pastor is through with his comments or his prayer, we'll also have a pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Officer Ott from Cobb County Police Department. When you see him come forward, please stand as you're able for the pledge. Pastor, good morning.
Good morning.
Go right ahead. Glad to have you.
Let me pray for us. Eternal God, our Father, we are admonished in your word to pray for those in leadership positions. This we do today with grateful hearts for those who have stepped forward and have taken on the difficult task of decision-making. As they look to you for wisdom and discernment, I pray that your Spirit will reveal to each the right moves to make for the people of Cobb County. Let them not be swayed by what is popular but by what is right. May each utilize the gifts of talent and education to carry out their duties, and then be able to communicate those decisions to the people of Cobb County. Give to us, who stand on the sidelines, a willingness to support the decisions here made, even if we might disagree. Give to us the wisdom to allow our elected officials to lead us out of their understanding of all the facts and the best that they have in mind for this county. Now, Father, be in this place in our time today as we ask and pray it in Christ's name. Amen. And God bless you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda this morning will be the consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and our zoning staff have fully investigated, and we're all satisfied that all the pertinent details have been handled and have been -- issues have been resolved and for which there's no known opposition. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, who's the fellow you see over here to my left, will read these cases into the record, and he'll ask if there's anyone present wishing to comment on or is in opposition to any of those particular cases. If there is, we may elect to pull that item from the consent agenda, in which case we would then hear it in its regular numerical sequence. Next, we will hear those cases that were either held or continued from a previous hearing. And lastly, we will hear all of the regular cases again in their numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked to come forward and identify themselves, be sworn in, and then present their case. Then the opposition will be invited to do the same. Identify themselves, be counted for the record, be sworn in, and give their testimony. When a case number is called again by Mr. Peterson, all those wishing to address the Board should present themselves to Mr. Jason Campbell. Jason, raise your hand right there on the front row. He'll take care of our swearing-in. He also maintains a list. You'll need to sign the list so we get the spelling of your name correctly for our record. Please be aware, and this is most important, please be aware that each side gets 10 minutes to present their case. That's 10 minutes collectively, not 10 minutes per person. So that's 10 minutes for the applicant and 10 minutes for the opposition. So be sure you're aware of that. Just gauge the length of your comments correctly so that everyone has time to speak. Be mindful of the length of your comments. And remember too, at that point, when you're standing up and presenting your case, there's no rebuttal at that time. That's not your time to ask us questions. That's the time for you to make your comments. We may invite you back up later to clarify a point or to answer a question that has arisen from your testimony. So that's our procedure, and we appreciate it if you'll follow those rules. John, what's on the agenda first this morning?
I thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-87 of 2015, Fuqua Acquisitions II LLC. That case was continued by the -- the staff will not be heard until the April 1st, 2016, zoning hearing. Res zoning case Z-98 of 2015, Columbia Properties Capital LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-98 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-105 of 2015, EAH Acquisitions LLC. That case was continued by the Planning Commission until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-105 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-106, CRP Oakmont Skyline II LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-106 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-5, Aldridge Grady and Trucking Company Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-5 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-11, Minusia Jahangar. That case was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-11 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-14, Ku Kentai. That case was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-14 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-16, Dominus Mill LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-16 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-18, Pope and Land Enterprises Incorporated. Was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-18 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-21, Race Truck Petroleum Incorporated. Was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-21 will not be heard today. Res zoning case, or Special Land Use Permit Number Three, Dominus Mill LLC. Was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP Three will not be heard today. SLEP Four, Minusia Jahangar. Was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP Four will not be heard today. And lastly, SLEP Five, Verizon Wireless LLC. Was continued by the staff until the April 1st, 2016, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP Five will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, there is a request for an early head count for two cases. Can I get a few -- a show of hands here of those who are opposed to rezoning case Z-6, Greenhouse Properties of Atlanta LLC? Please raise your hands. Keep them raised. Z-6?
Please keep your hands up so we can get an accurate count.
Let the record show there are eight people here in opposition. Can I get -- also get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z-22, Jim Chapman Communities Incorporated? Please raise your hands for Z-22, if you're opposed.
Yeah, it's the same.
Let the record show there are nine people here opposed to rezoning case Z-22, and we do remind you, if you do leave, please leave a spokesman here to speak on either Z-6 or Z-22. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, please put your cellphones on silent mode. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations, so if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Just as a reminder, the cases John read into the record as continued cases, if you heard your case number called in that list, they will not be heard today, so you're free to leave if you'd like to. Also, if you were counted for the record on Z-6 and Z-22, those cases should be pretty close to the front of the agenda list, so you might want to stick around. But if you have to leave, that's fine. We have got you counted for the record, so that'll go into the record. Okay, I'm sorry, John. What was your next thing?
Ready to start the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Let's go for it.
Okay. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for March 1st, 2016. First case on consent is rezoning case Z-19. Arility Corp. requests a rezoning from R-20 to LI for the purpose of industrial use in Land Lot 611 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Factory Shaw's Road, north of White Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Combining this section with the adjacent larger lot, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, storm warning management division comments and recommendations, Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-19? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-24, Booze Development Group Incorporated. Requests rezoning from NRC, NR20 to NRC with stipulations for the purpose of retail in Land Lot 1263 of the 19th District. The property is located at the intersection of the northwesterly side of Brownsville Road and the easterly side of Pine Valley Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on January 7th, 2016, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, storm warning management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Building architecture to be approved by the district commissioner, and letter from Mr. John Moore dated February 24th, 2016. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-24? Two. Mr. Chairman, there are two people here opposed, so we'll pull that off and send it here in normal order.
That'll be fine. So we will be hearing Z-24.
Okay. Rezoning case Z-25, Pine Crest Nursery School Incorporated. Requests rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of daycare, personal care, and retail in Land Lot 538 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Johnson Ferry Road, north of Lassiter Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on January 11th, 2016. Verences as noted in the zoning comments, fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer comments and recommendations, storm warning management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Letter from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr. dated February 17th, 2016. No trash containers on the side of the building next to Garden Gate subdivision, no outside speakers, no billiards or pool halls, recycling locations, or drive-in restaurants, all existing and future signage to comply with the Cobb County development standards. Parked to be repaired and restriped prior to occupancy of the building. Upon redevelopment of the site and the proposal to be heard, upon redevelopment of the site, the proposal to be heard and approved by the Board of Commissioners. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-25? Let the record show there's no one opposed. We begin the land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP Three, St. Benedict Episcopal Church LLC. Request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a farmer's market in Land Lots 694 and 695 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Cooper Lake Road, on the west side of Atlanta Road, north of Cumberland Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the request for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on January 5th, 2016. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Reverend Brian Sullivan dated December 18th, 2015. Applicant to meet code requirements for farmer's market found in Cobb County Code Section 13436. Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, and storm warning management division comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning -- to LUP Three? Is there anyone here opposed to LUP Three? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay, so that'll remain on the consent agenda.
And that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so Z-24 then will be pulled from the consent agenda. We'll hear that in its regular sequence then. The others will remain on the consent agenda. John, you and I were talking earlier, there are two of these cases, or I'm sorry, one of these cases, Z-25, where we need to have something added to the record. Kristi, that's yours, I believe. So you got that in, so that's been taken care of. Gaunt and Kristi, anything else to add to your cases? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda with the exception of Z-24, as presented.
Excellent. We have a second?
A second.
Second from Skip. All in favor of the motion? So that's approved. Five zero, I think. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, John, what's next?
Moving into the continued case agenda. Rezoning case Z-102 of 2015, Griffin Real Estate Management. Request rezoning from R-30 to RSL for the purpose of residential senior living supportive in Land Lot 195 of the 20th District. Property is located on the northwest side of Mars Hill Road, northeast of Brookstone Drive. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-102? Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the Board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you're opposed and you wish to give us any testimony, you need to come up and be sworn in. Okay? There you go. Good morning, Mr. Bailey.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. For the record, James Bailey here today on behalf of Griffin Real Estate Management Company on Z-102. What you have before you today is an application for a supportive RSL. The location of the property you see before you there is on the edge of a community activity center on Mars Hill Road and Stylesborough Road. It is adjacent to property zone GC, NRC, and ONI, and then further north on Mars Hill Road, it begins to become residential. Give you kind of an idea of what's on the ground around the site. Our site, that's the property line there where you see the word "site." There's McDonald's located immediately to the left. That being McDonald's across the street is a Waffle House and auto repair. I want to talk a little bit about not only the location, but also the elevation and contours of the site. Parkwood subdivision is located across Mars Hill Road and is at an elevation, as you can see there, of 1020 to 1040. Brickstone, a part of Brickstone subdivision is there at the 1,000 elevation, and then our site is roughly 960. And I think that's important. You can see from the Parkwood subdivision that view looking down toward the property there at the bottom of the hill. I think that's important because we're talking about a building that's going in here. You can see the cross-section of how it's going to be built into the slope. It's two stories over a basement, and it's, I think, important to note, this is a six-acre approximate tract. The RSL supporters have a minimum of three acres, so this is on basically double size what would be allowed, and I think that provides for a better product and a better setup of the project. The proposal is for 95 residential units. It's under the 100 allowed by code. Again, it's a fully supportive senior product. There is no independent living. And the height, as you see before you today, is, as measured by code, 31 feet 6 inches and is well within the 35-feet height requirement that is set on just residential homes. I want to talk a little bit about the architecture. What you see there before you is the front of the building, what it will look like, four-sided brick architecture. This is the rear, the two stories over the basement. You can see there stone veneers, no vinyl product, no hardy plank material utilized. So you have an upscale architecture on both, all four sides of the building. The site plan you see before you there, I wanted to kind of give everyone a view of what we're looking at. Brickstone subdivision there is located on your left, and there's a large power line easement that runs across the bottom portion of the property. I think you saw earlier in some of the pictures that showed the sidewalk ending there at the start of the easement. We want to talk some about buffer, even though we sit at a lower elevation than either subdivision on both sides. We have agreed to extensive landscaping. You can see the buffers and the landscaping there that is located to the bottom left and immediately adjacent to Brickstone. The existing trees on the site, there is a significant number of those that will be allowed to be saved and create an existing natural buffer. And what I'm talking about here, you can look on the blue arrow there, that is the site, and it shows that existing mature trees along the edge. To the extent those can be saved, they will be, and we've agreed in our stipulation letter to present all specimen trees to the county arborist. We've also agreed in our filings with the county to make certain proposed plantings at the locations. What you see blown up there is a section of the property that's located directly adjacent to Brickstone. We've identified cryptomaria and other trees and plantings that would be there. We provided these to Brickstone HOA for their review, and you can see there at the bottom of this exhibit kind of the cross-section, what we'd expect the height elevations to be, and believe that will significantly buffer the building from the adjacent subdivision. That being said, I wanted to kind of show you design concepts of the inside of the building that's currently being reviewed. This would be the circle that you saw on the rear of the building. Other interior finishes to basically demonstrate that this is a quality product. It's under design, and these are some of the design features that are being reviewed for this location, that being the dining room. I want to talk very briefly about what the residential senior living product is. Some people are not aware of that. It was a category was designed to address decreasing mobility in our seniors and distinct markets that arise from their needs and desires as they move to a more independent and supportive community. One of the important things is, an RSL is designed to serve as a transaction, transition between commercial uses and residential uses. And I think if you've seen on the previous slides, Z-102 does that. RSL supportive living, as opposed to other RSL categories, is the least intrusive, and while it's not completely density-neutral, it certainly, if it meets the height requirements, is fairly close to that. Again, though, the unit density requirements of the code are 100, and we're under that, so we do meet code on that. And the supportive product basically provides support for the needs of seniors who need daily assistance but still want to live as independently as possible. This product focuses on memory care and has a target market, which we've researched within the five-mile radius of the location, and we believe there is a market there for this product. I want to talk about two things everybody hates: traffic and taxes. With this RSL, the fully supportive product just basically does not generate any noticeable traffic. There were some traffic concerns. We have 25 employees working shifts that come in on off-peak hours, and these residents do not have cars. For example, Mars Hill Road has 16,200 trips a day. Traffic analysis for Z-102 would have three to six cars turning in to the location during peak hours. Compare that with a use that could go there, such as a church, or homes that generate between 10 and 20 trips per day. That being said, Cobb DOT has requested, and that is going to be constructed, a deceleration lane going toward the McDonald's on Mars Hill and then a left-turn lane. So I think that more than compensates for any traffic that could be generated by this product. And last but not least, an RSL supportive has a beneficial impact on schools in that, unlike some independent developments, there are no grandkids that would be living with their grandparents at this product. And because the seniors don't own the product themselves, then they would not be subject to a tax exemption, which all other seniors get in Cobb County at age 62. So you're going to have no students but a significant amount of tax dollars to the schools to help fund the community. We've submitted a stipulation letter dated February 26, and it has numerous things in that. I won't go through them all now. We did agree to a deed restriction to, in favor of Cobb County, to ensure that these do not turn into multifamily apartments. We've addressed any stacking of vehicles during construction on Mars Hill Road. We've addressed the monument base sign to match the community. The landscape plan we discussed earlier will be approved by the county arborist and include a member of the Board of Brickstone HOA, and would include a 40-foot buffer. Regardless of what the site plan shows, it is a 40-foot buffer. We've agreed against Brickstone with a 10-foot buffer along Mars Hill Road to screen it. The elevations you saw are in the record and part of the stipulations, and there are other protections that we've agreed to, and I won't go through them all here. Staff analysis on this product is yes. They have stated that the RSL supportive in this project is a use suitable in view of the adjacent nearby properties. It will have no adverse effect on surrounding properties, no burdensome use of existing streets, schools, utilities. We've touched on that. And that this development is supported by existing and changing conditions in the area and will have much less impact on the neighborhood, such as other uses, as a church and other things that I've talked about. And of course, that led to your professional staff recommending approval. So I'm here for any questions today, Mr. Chairman, that I can answer, but we respectfully ask that for your favorable consideration of this and follow your staff's recommendation of approval and approve Z-102 as presented, Mr. Chairman.
How did you do that? You came in at just under 10 minutes.
Well, you know, I think so.
I'm proud of you. You don't normally do that, James, but you did good today.
Save 36 seconds for my next one. I might need.
Well, that's fine. You did good. Thank you very much. Let's hear from the opposition now. We had, I think, one signed up. Come on up and give us your name. Tell us what you'd like us to know. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. My name is Harriet Johnson. I live on the property of Hayden Brook Drive, which backs up to his proposed site. He did answer the question regarding the buffer, because we did receive your information in the mail stating that, when we read it, that it was just a 20-foot buffer, which we were opposed to. Glad to know that it has been increased to the 40-foot buffer. We are happy to hear that there are going to be some trees left, because that was a main concern for us, because our home would literally back right up to it, and I'm glad to see that it's a brick all around and not just brick in the front, because our opposition was, we're not seeing the front, so we don't care about what it looks like from the front looking from Mars Hill Road. We're in the back, so you're affecting our backyard, you're affecting where our kids play. So that was our major concern for all the homeowners that's on Hayden Brook Drive that backs up to the property. I guess that was our main concern. We just want to make sure that there's going to be a significant amount of trees left to have a buffer, so we're not affected by the garbage coming to pick up and the deliveries of the food and everything that's coming into the facility. So if everything stays as exactly what he says it's supposed to be, we're okay with it. We don't have a problem. We just want to make sure that we had an adequate buffer. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else here wishing to speak to Z-102? Okay, not seeing and hearing any will close that portion. This is in District One. That'll be, our discussion will be handled by Skip Gunther, so Skip, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a case that I was expecting a lot of potential opposition on, and I just have to say that Mr. Bailey has done a remarkable job in working, I believe, in working with the Brickstone HOA, the neighbors, and other interested parties surrounding this. I've only received, I think it's three, possibly just two, emails and opposition. Several of those, two of those were early on in the process, and I think they've been totally addressed. I did receive one email last night, which was asking for two additional things. And so, Mr. Bailey, I wonder if you could come back up where we are, there you are, and just respond to these two. The one concern had to do with putting a privacy fence up adjacent to the Brickstone HOA. It's my belief, and I'd like to have you confirm this, that the landscaping that you're planning on that 40-foot buffer is going to be more than satisfactory in addressing any kind of privacy concerns, but still, I'm open to putting a privacy fence up if it's appropriate.
I believe the buffer is going to be taller and immediately address a view limitation. That would be much better than a privacy fence. You also, if you begin to put in privacy fences, you get into drip lines of trees, and you may not be able to save as many of the mature trees as you otherwise would if you just planted a cryptomaria next to them. So if there's a desire for the tree save, that would conflict with the fence.
Right, okay. And I know you have a, you're proposing to put a committee in place. There'll be the Brickstone HOA. There'll be the Brookstone HOA, the county arborist, and the developer. I would think that if in those discussions it came up that you needed to have a fence, that you'd be willing to put that in, I would expect, right?
I would expect that.
But my guess is you're probably not going to need to have that. Okay, the second issue had to do with trash collection hours, and you're suggesting in your stipulations that any delivery trucks, or for that matter, including trash collection, would be between, I think, at 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. I would think that maybe put into stipulation in here, since the trash container is to the back of the, to the rear of the property, that the hours for trash pickup be the same as they are in the Brookstone HOA, whatever that is.
That would be fine.
Does that sound fair?
That would be fine.
So those, you know, there have been a lot of issues having to do with traffic. I think DOT has addressed those. I think we're in good condition, so unless there's discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, go ahead, Skip.
Okay, I would make a motion that we recommend approval with placement on the BOC consent agenda, subject to the following conditions. The letter of stipulations received by the zoning department dated February 26, 2016, and the site plan dated February 10, 2016, with the letter of stipulations controlling, since that site plan has not been updated to include, for example, the 40-foot buffer along the Brookstone side. Second, to add to stipulation number one, brick will be used that matches as closely as possible the brick used at the Brookstone subdivision entrance. All staff comments and recommendations, including DOT revised comments dated February 23, 2016. I would modify stipulation number 13 to stipulate that trash pickups will be the same hours as those in the Brookstone subdivision. And I think those are my, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second from Judy. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Call for the vote then. All in favor? Pass is 5-0. Thank you very much. What's next, John? I believe we still have a cell phone up here, is that right, John?
No, it's being planned.
We don't? Okay, good. One other thing I would add, since I have the floor, excuse me. Today, vote. Don't forget to vote. If you haven't voted this morning, on your way out of here and on the way home, everybody go and vote. Okay, John, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Board, the next rezoning case also has a companion, SLUP case. Do you want to hear both of those together?
I don't see why not, yet. Is that okay, Gault, with you?
I'll call both of them then. Rezoning case Z4, Unique International Auto LLC requests rezoning from R20 to HI for the purpose of used auto sales, auto storage yard, and professional office in Land Lot 34, the 18th District. Property is located on the east side of Powell Drive, south of Veterans Memorial Highway. And also, SLUP1, Unique International Auto LLC requests a special land use permit for the purpose of used auto sales and auto salvage yard in Land Lot 34, the 18th District. Property is located on the east side of Powell Drive, south of Veterans Memorial Highway. The applicant for both cases is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z4 or SLUP1?
One.
Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Morning, Mr. Huff.
Good morning, Chairman. Planning Commissioners, my name is Parks Hough for the Law Firm of Sam's, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bailey, and I represent Unique Automotive in relation to this rezoning application and special land use permit application. The property is located on Powell Drive, and as you see from the aerial photograph that's on your monitors now, the property is on the east side of Powell Drive and just south of Veterans Memorial Parkway. And the property and the area is very unique, and I'm using the term "unique" since it's also my client's name, in that it is a multitude of automotive uses. The property, though, is zoned R20, residential 20,000-square-foot lot, but it is an industrial metal building, and that has been built, it's 20 or 30 years, no, 30 or 40 years old. So it has not been used residentially for any recent time at all, nor has any of the properties up and down Powell Drive been used residentially. Also, if you look behind the property, you can see the large property that's zoned light industrial. So in terms of the property's impact on adjacent properties, there isn't any. To the south is a general commercial property. That is a grandfather GC, because the area is a neighborhood activity center instead of a community activity center, so the GCs don't give any, don't have any impact or any value, and all the GC properties are non-conforming uses. But that is a automotive repair, including auto body shop to our south. Also, that is on the other side of Powell Drive, also, as you can see, automotive uses there. Just to the north, the piece that's zoned NRC was heard last month. That was R20, and was zoned to NRC last month for a roofing contractor. So I hope, and if I can now show you the aerial photograph, just shows you the street view of Powell Drive, and you can see it is an older road, and you can see from the photograph how the road is almost all automotive. And it makes very much sense that my client's proposed use is for an auto business, and I do have to explain why we're going for HI. Actually, the better category for our use is general commercial, which would fit in with other GC properties up and down, up and down the area. But because we want to do automobile storage and sales, use automobile sales, the only two categories that are available is GC and heavy industrial. So it's not really heavy industrial use, but that, the way the code works and the way the fact that GC is a non-conforming use under a neighborhood activity center, it forces us to go to the HI zoning category. So that is the reason why we're asking for heavy industrial and the special land use permit. My client does internet auto sales, so it's automobile storage of cars and the sale of cars through the internet, some of which are international sales of automobiles. So quite frankly, that is rather an innocuous use in terms of just simply storing cars and selling cars. It's not a used car lot, although the code doesn't have any different definitions. It's not a typical used car lot where you're attracting people off the street to come and tour your car lot. It's really intended for people to view cars online, and it's really, and most of the sales are actually international. So it's for the storage of cars that are being sold and for the sale of cars, and that's the purpose for the special land use permit. We have tried to engage the Mableton Improvement Coalition, who is here to speak in opposition, to see if we could come up with some terms and conditions that they would find acceptable. But they are just strictly opposed to the property being used for the proposed auto, used auto and auto storage containing special land use permits. So as you can see, going back to the aerial photograph, just to recap real quick, the property is in, on a street that is heavily commercialized, very automobile-intensive. You've got general commercial to the north, I mean, to the south, and to the west, you have light industrial to the east, and this use fits in with what's there. And what you're not seeing here in opposition, you have Mableton Improvement Coalition, who has taken a special interest to, they think, clean up Powell Drive is one of their missions. But quite frankly, Powell Drive is not directly, you know, related to the main thoroughfare, which is to the north. And so you don't come down this street unless you've got business down this street. What you don't have is any of the other owners on Powell Drive here opposed to this application, because this is consistent with what other users in the area are using it for, and quite frankly, where you want these type uses. Because as the street scene shows, it's not the most beautiful street in Mableton, but it is also not on a thoroughfare that's viewed by the traveling public. If it was on Veterans Memorial, it'd have a totally different opinion. So I appreciate your time and consideration. I ask that you rezone the property to heavy industrial that allows automobile storage and the used auto sales and grant the special land use permit. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. We have anyone here in opposition? Come on up, let's hear from you at this point. Just give us your name.
Hi. There's one or two photos. Hi, my name's Sonya Wheatley, and I am with the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I do have a photo or two that's going to be street view, and I guess to get started on this, we haven't really taken a special interest in Powell Drive. We're concerned with all properties in Mableton. There have been several that have come through, and it is a street that has been long neglected. If nothing else, that's evidenced by the fact that we still have R20 on properties that have never been used for residential. So it's a piece of Mableton, does need to be cleaned up some. There were two cases last month that we were able to work out details, we're very pleased. There are going to be new businesses coming in, and on the aerial, you could see the property to the left, you know, it's been cleaned up. There's another large specialized contractor, I think is what we ended up with, just on the other part of Powell Drive. Again, great businesses, people are coming in utilizing these spaces. This is the street view. So when we talk about, I guess, kind of to start over, this case is here as a result of 35 code enforcement visits in just over two years. There's quite a significant history to it. He's right that we can't really find a way to work out heavy industrial. It's just not appropriate in an AC, and we are looking to help, you know, this property become legally zoned so that it can be used. This is the view of it, so it's not, while it's true that there's a lot of automotive use in the area, you still have to operate legally. You still have to have cars parked on pavement, you know, not parked on the right-of-way. I don't really know how this could be used as for automotive at this point, although putting it into the NAC category could allow for the building to be remodeled with bays, because there currently aren't any bays to pull into to do auto work. There's one other picture, just slightly different view. This is the automotive storage that we're talking about. So while I don't know what exactly is done with it as far as, you know, the auto sales, there are car parts, there are, you know, it's just a mess, and we are looking to have it cleaned up so that it can be used legally, so that the neighbor who's moving in as a specialized contractor doesn't have to look at that, you know, and so that it better's. The property behind, I do want to point out, is light industrial, and it has been that way for years, only because the plan is for self-storage. And at that time, that's what that self-storage was. So we often run into this when we're having this discussion about Powell Drive, that it's light industrial behind, but that's for self-storage units. And if you look below, what people move up a little, what we tend to just disregard is the fact that those are houses right below it. So people live there, it's part of the Sweetwater Creek watershed, so it is important that we maintain for those people, as well as for the businesses along Powell Drive. We think the staff made a great recommendation to suggesting this be NRC, so we completely support that. We would request that you guys add some stipulations to help in cleaning up the property and getting it ready for future use. That's in our letter dated January 28. I don't believe it was resubmitted. Robyn's out of town. Okay. One of them would be removal of all vehicles from the property that aren't used by employees or customers for personal transportation, and that that be, the business be brought to compliance within 90 days of the BOC approval, that all the litter, the debris, the scrap metal, everything that appears to be used as a scrapyard, it almost seems like they are doing salvage, that that be cleaned and removed, that there be paving and striping of the parking, as you could see in the picture, and you don't have to go back, but there's not a parking lot. It's just being parked on grass. Also, I believe that the county staff did recommend demarcation of a single entrance. This is part of the old build-out. Most of those properties on Powell Drive seem to have the entire front of their property as just a big wide access, and that's a DOT recommendation that we support. We would like to see the removal of the fencing that's along Powell Drive, and make sure that any fence that goes in that is replacing it be no closer than the front edge of the building. So there could certainly be parking in front, but really, you know, having barbed wire and wire right on the property line is a little more than we're hoping for. Any new signs that are put up, so if the building is modified, or if new signage is put up, that it be compliant with county regulations, and that any dumpster enclosure have the locking doors and also be within compliance with county code. Couple of prohibited uses, obviously, adult entertainment, gun knives, tattoos, all that kind of stuff, just in case. That's really all I have. We're happy to see some great progress on this street. You know, it's not just for Mableton Improvement Coalition or Mableton, it's for the residents, and it's for the neighboring businesses. They're investing there, and they also deserve to have not that view. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sonya. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z4? Okay, not seeing and hearing any, we'll close this portion of the hearing, and this is in District 4, so Gault, Porter will handle our discussion. Gault.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Looking at this property, much like many that we've seen in recent months on Powell Drive, it's always a challenge. The applicant's applied for heavy industrial, which this is in a neighborhood activity center, so, well, GC's not allowable use in a neighborhood activity center, heavy industrial isn't either. Heavy industrial's a category that's several notches above in intensity than what's allowed for in a neighborhood activity center. I would say, it appears like they may be doing some auto salvage there, which would require a heavy industrial zoning. Looking at the special land use permit for automotive sales, one of the basic requirements for automotive sales is that you have an acre of paving, and this property's not even a half-acre large on its own, so obviously, they come nowhere near close to an acre of paving, and this property's a perfect illustration of why we require an acre of paving. The pictures we saw are relatively uncluttered compared to when I visited the property recently, because they had cars parked two to three wide in the right-of-way, as well as packed wall-to-wall on the property. So this parcel just isn't sized for this kind of operation, so I think I have to agree with staff that, you know, heavy industrial's not the proper category for this, since it's in a neighborhood activity center. I think NRC is the proper category. I do think we need to, you know, provide a zoning from R20 to something, and I think NRC and staff has recommended light automotive repair only as part of the NRC, and I think that makes sense. You know, I agree with the points of we need to do something, give them some timeline to get rid of all the non-compliant vehicles, the debris, all of that. This site looks horrible. Obviously, they've been cited numerous times, you know, or been visited, anyway, numerous times over the last couple of years, so we need to get this property cleaned up, you know, and I think we should treat this parcel, much like we treated the parcel right next door last month, because it seems fair, and with that, we did do NRC, as you see, and we asked them to repave and stripe the parking lot, to put in some landscaping, to make all signs compliant with the current county code, so I think that would, which is consistent with what we've done with other properties on the street as well, as they've come in for rezoning. So if anybody has any discussion, otherwise, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we recommend deletion to NRC, subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Dumpster enclosure to meet current Cobb County development standards and to be installed within 120 days of Board of Commissioners' final decision. Repave and stripe parking lot within 120 days of Board of Commissioners' final decision. Parking plan to be submitted to the zoning division manager for approval. Landscaping to include at least 12 shrubs and grass to be installed between the right-of-way and the front of the building setback in non-paved areas. Landscaping plan to be approved by county landscape architect. Landscaping installation to be completed within 120 days of Board of Commissioners' final decision. Landscaping shall be maintained with any dead shrubs or grass to be replaced within 60 days. Landscaping shall be maintained with any dead shrubs or grass to be replaced within 60 days. All signage to comply with current sign ordinance. Current pole sign to be removed. All non-compliant vehicles, outdoor storage, litter and debris to be removed within 60 days of Board of Commissioners' final decision. And then... And I should say that this motion relates to case Z4 only. I'm going to make a separate motion for the special land use permit. And also add a clerk's note to request that code enforcement visit the property after 60 days and after 120 days from BOC final decision. So that's my motion for Z4.
Okay, so clarify one thing. You want them to visit when?
After 60 days from Board of Commissioner's final decision and after 120 days.
Okay, so you're talking two visits. Okay, I got you. So we have a motion. Do we have a second for that? So we have a second from Christie. Any other discussion? All in favor? So Z4 is taken care of. And now the SLUP?
Okay, and with regard to SLUP 1, I recommend denial.
We have another second from Christie. Any further discussion? All in favor? So SLUP is denied. So that takes care of that one. Thank you very much. What is next, John?
Res zoning case Z6, Greenhouse Properties of Atlanta LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 to RA5 for the purpose of single-family residential in land lot 696 of the 17th district. The property is located on the north side of Lee Road, west of Atlanta Road. Earlier, there were eight people here opposed. The applicant's representative is present. Is, all those, all those people wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
So if you think you might want to speak, even if you're not sure, come on up and be sworn in. Doesn't mean you have to speak. Let's just get that done. Good morning, Mr. Sands.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Members of the planning commission, for the record, my name is Garvis Sands with the law firm of Sands, Larkin, Huff, and Bally. And in this case, we represent Greenhouse Properties of Atlanta LLC, which is the applicant and also is property owner concerning this application for rezoning. I have with me today Mr. David Meyer of DGM Land Planning Consultants. So at the appropriate time either, Mr. Meyer, I can respond to any questions that you may have. I think our builder, Mr. T. Anderson, is en route. So if there's any building questions, perhaps he'll be here in time to respond to those. Or maybe Mr. Meyer, I can handle those as well. The property that you're seeing on your monitors now on the GIS map, this is a 1.89 acre tract of land, as you can see, some on the north side of Lee Road, west of its intersection with Atlanta Road. On the future land use map, it's in an area that's split, most of it zoned, or not zoned, but designated MDR, medium density residential, which allows 2.5 units per acre, up to five units per acre. At 3.7 units per acre, we're really at the low, mid-low end of that range. And if you look at the parcel that's one, well, not the parcel, but subdivision, is one parcel removed from us to our east, this is Central Garden subdivision. This subdivision is zoned RA5, but it is zoned to a 4.27 unit per acre density, much more dense than what we proposed. And then if you look to your, your west, you can see in the city of Smyrna, that is Stonegrass subdivision, also more densely zoned, higher UPA than, than the subject property. I think it's fair to state, and I think all of you have noticed it, whether it's your district or not, of course, this is Mr. Terry's domain, so to speak. I think it's fair to say the clear trend for development in this area is high-end residential. This is an opinion that's shared by your, by your staff, which of course has recommended that the application be approved, subject to the site plan you're getting ready to see in just a minute, the staff comments and recommendations. And then my, my latest stipulation letter that we submitted Friday of last week, this dated February the 26th, 2016. This is the site plan with Greenhouse is requesting is a rezoning from its current classification of R-20 to RA5 for a custom quality-built, single-family residential detached community consisting of a total number of seven homes at a density of 3.7 units per acre. Price points will be ranging from $700,000 to $800,000 and up. While this application's been pending, we have, of course, established a dialogue with your professional staff, which of course has recommended approval, as I said. We've also established a dialogue with a, I can't say it's an organized set of residents, but a set of residents and Oakdale Civic Association. We've had a lot of interest in this application, as you've seen. And just as late as last week, we had a meeting in the House directly across from our entrance on Lee Road. And I want to thank Mary Rose Barnes and her group for, for setting that meeting up. As a result of those discussions with area residents, we did revise our stipulation letter. This thing's been pending for three months. It originally came out to be heard before you last month, but prior to that, staff had continued it to allow the discussions to continue and for us to revise the site plan. Because when we originally looked at the property, there was a stream that traversed, we thought a stream that traversed the top one-third of it, the northern part of the property. And as it turned out, Mr. Meyer of DGM Land Planning Consultants and Mr. Frank Gibson, your Seoul and Cobb County Erosion Control Manager, walked the property and it was determined that stream was not blue-lined. So that significantly changed our approach to this. Rather than the shotgun lots that you saw in the original analysis, you now have more, a more creative layout that Mr. Meyer's been able to put together, which includes lots that all meet the RA5 requirements. Only two variances, those are with respect to rear setback variances on lots one and seven. Everything else meets the county's requirements. The streets are private but built to the county's design and detailed specifications. The detention is private, but on its own dedicated lot and built to the county's design and detailed specifications as well. So in addition to the self-imposed stipulations that we have in our February 26th letter, we have those that were suggested by, by staff. And we have those that were asked for by the area residents that we met with last week and during the pendency of this, of this application. So you do have a revised site plan. You're seeing this. We submitted this under separate cover on February the, the 2nd. And you do have a revised stipulation letter dated February the 26th. The residents here are going to be a minimum of 3,600 square feet and greater. It's four-sided architecture. You have seen the elevations or renderings that have been done by Caldwell Klein that have been handed out to you. When I say four-sided architecture, I don't mean exact treatment, the exact same thing on every side. I mean equal treatment on all four sides. So in other words, there's not going to be any one side with 100% horizontal planking or 100% brick, 100% anything. It's a nice mix. Caldwell Klein does an excellent job of creating the cottage-type of architecture, we think, that is not only consistent with the, the type of houses that are here, with the new houses that have been built, and then the older houses, like the one we met in last week, that have been refurbished and redone. We'll be submitting a landscape plan or the plan review process. All of the, all of the yards are going to be sotted and in front, inside that is, and irrigated as well. Also, as a part of the landscape plan, at our point of ingress and egress on Lee Road, there'll be ground-based monument-style wall-type signage that'll have the subdivision name. It'll be landscaped professionally. It'll be irrigated professionally. It will have backlighting as well. So it'll be a very attractive entrance that will comport with architectural style and composition that you're looking at with the, the various elevations and renderings that I've handed out to you. Any lighting will be low-intensity environmental-type lighting. We'll have decorative street lightings on the very short cul-de-sac street you see within the subdivision. There'll be a mandatory homeowners association. And with price points where we are at 700 to 800 and greater, it's not hard to fund an HOA. We'll have a third-party management company that'll be hired to handle the day-to-day operations of the HOA, ensuring that it's insured and ensuring that it's properly funded, which is not unusual for even a small subdivision such as, such as this. We'll have covenants, rules and regulations, protective covenants that will be filed prior to the issuance of any type of CO that will cover architectural elements. And also will cover any fencing issues, all the fencing within here, if any. We don't plan any right now, but any fencing will have to be uniform and consistent with the protective covenants and those regulations that are approved by the HOA. DOT has asked for a number of things, including the voluntary donation and conveyance of right-of-way on Lee Road, 25 feet from the, the center line. We'll agree to that. We'll curb gutter and sidewalk the frontage of this property. We'll also comply with your subdivision rules and regulations where houses that are any less than 20 feet between, or the space between less than 20 feet, you're required to have .5 parking spaces. So that will give us, what, three point, three and a half parking spaces that we have to provide according to the regulations, and I'm, I'm sure they round that up. Of course, that, that is a, be handled and hammered out during plan review, along with the positioning of the mail kiosk that you know now. Builders don't like this, but it's required by the United States Postal Service to have a centrally-located mail kiosk. So you'll see that as well. All the garages that you're seeing on the, the renderings are all two- and three-car garages. We have a stipulation that they'll be used for vehicular parking. They're not going to be used for living. I mean, they can use it for other things simultaneously with vehicular parking, but that's primarily what they're, they're for. The stormwater management feature, as I mentioned, meets the Cobb County requirements with respect to stormwater management. We have also complied with all the fire department regulations, any life safety issues or issues related to fire prevention. At the meeting that we had the other night, we hadn't delineated hours of, of operation or hours of construction. And we've now done that, is contained in paragraph 13A through E, which includes no work on Sundays, not interior work, not any work, not even work approved by the district commissioner. They just didn't want to see any work on Sundays, and that was fine. Any construction or workers' vehicles during the construction and build-out will be done on the site itself. And Greenhouse will secure whatever reports are necessary in terms of demolition and environmental issues with respect to the structures on the, on the property. We, of course, have provisions for the commissioner to make minor modifications if it's so approved by, by him and/or go through another business application under certain sets of circumstances. So on behalf of Greenhouse and its consultants, we respectfully request that you follow your professional staff's recommendation, because after all, it's not me, it's not you, it's they that are the professionals. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we respectfully request that this application be approved as presented today.
Thank you, Garvis. We're pretty good at this. It may not be express, but we've been doing this a while.
No, I was just saying, I was. Now, you've got professionals. You've got professionals here to tell you what to do, so I trust them.
No, we're, we're fine with that. Let's hear from the opposition now.
Well, first, I want to know why I didn't get complimented for, for not having any time, one way or the other.
You did, you did good. You did really good. We are proud of you.
Thanks, Chairman.
Good morning. Give us your name.
Hi, how are you? I appreciate this opportunity, Mr. Commissioner. And I was not prepared to speak. I just made a few notes.
Give us your name.
Oh, Taylor Vaughn. I'm sorry. I am in the House at 2049 Lee Road, right next to this property. I, I just jotted a few notes. I'm not nearly as eloquent as the proponent is. But we are stuck between an RA5 already established in 2005 that was zoned, and now this one. My family bought this house in 1961 and lived there ever since. I've seen a lot of changes. And I'm not opposed to this. I am glad to see this property being sold and developed. But it was sold in November of last year for zoned R-20. And that's, that's what I want to see kept there. And they could even move it up to four lots in this area and still beat the R-20 zoning. You know, if this builder goes bust, which happened on the other side of me, we could get a different, totally different builder, different quality, different everything. I have seen that happen. And the original builder was, was of, of Central Gardens, was a very good builder. The new builder is not. And we were told when they bought this property, there were three siblings, and they were going to build three houses. I was all for that. I think I'm taking too much time. So I, I just want to say, I respectfully request that this not be approved. And there are some water issues I think someone else is going to approach, but, but I, I do appreciate this opportunity, Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Let's hear from the next speaker, please. You can sign in later. Just come on up so we can save time here. Good, good morning.
Hey. My name is Kathy Cheek, and I live on Westwood. And I too agree with Mr. Vaughn. We would like to see it kept R-20, four houses plenty, not seven. We, there's still some issues with the final plans. I know they've given you all elevations, but we really want to see what they truly plan to build there. So we're asking for the final plans to be given. We do not want to see a road come off of Lee Road. I don't know if y'all are familiar enough with Lee Road, but we don't want it to be developed a cul-de-sac. So we would like to try to keep no roads coming off of Lee Road. And I ask that you keep it R-20. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Mary Rose Barnes, Oakdale Community Association. We appreciate Mr. Sands and his associates meeting with us, our neighbors, last week and the fact that applicant agreed to all, many of our concerns. However, we have unresolved issues with this application. Mr. Sands' assertion that the detention pond would be public, that was done at our meeting, is in conflict with the stipulation with stormwater recommendations, which require private detention as they are asking for an access from a private road. We seriously question the feasibility of an HOA, HOA's ability to fund major repairs with only seven houses. Of course, the, the developer wants the county to maintain, the county to maintain the detention pond, but private access, detention requires private detention. Private detention requires private, private ownership and maintenance. In order to accomplish this goal of county maintenance, the entrance must be from a public road. Of course, this change would entail rights of way, as with public roads, and reduce the density. The developer cannot have it both ways. He cannot have public detention with private roads. The site plan dated February the 2nd denotes a 10-foot separation between the houses. This is not noted in the stipulation letter, but that's what the site plan says and referenced by the, by the stipulation letter. This circumstance is at once a code variant, a safety flag, and an aberration to the other development in the area. We believe there should be a minimum of 15 feet between houses. That'd be safety, safety requirements, and is more, more, more like what's already there. Although the stipulation letter references the requisite guest parking places, there is no indication as where they could be placed. The same applies to the kiosks. There is no place for them at that density. The new stipulation letter references fences, but does not provide for HOA maintenance. Such maintenance is necessary for the property continuity of the neighborhood. We believe that the, the district commissioner should approve, approve the fence design and, and type. Perhaps there should be, we believe there, if there should be fences, they should be wrought iron across Lee Road. There are no other subdivisions in the area where you have a wooden fence to the subdivision. They're all open to the homes. If you start a barrier at this point, it's going to set a bad precedent. You could have wrought iron or wrought iron type across the front and perhaps wooden at the back. It would make more sense. We also believe that yard should be fully sotted, not as befits, befits houses at this point. They, they originally had asked for siding on the front only. They added side. They originally had asked for siding on the front only, they added side siding, but at this price point, certainly all the yard should be sotted. With a workable number of houses with a subdivision with public roads and detention necessitating a reduction in the houses to five or six units and our other recommendations, we believe this development could be appropriate for the neighborhood. We also note there already are existing stormwater problems to neighbors on both sides from Central Gardens. They're ongoing, they have not been resolved, there have been attempts to resolve them. So this is a flood hazard area, this is a very critical issue. And keep in mind, the applicant's original proposal was for six houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z6? Come on up. Were you sworn in? Okay, let's get you sworn in if you weren't sworn in. Just give us your name.
My name is James Northway.
And I'm Ann Fernandez, this is my husband. First thing I wanted to mention that our house is right on top there, it adjusts to the proposed development. We never received notice of this, and most people on Westwood Road did not either receive any notice of this, so I don't know if other neighbors are going to take issue with this. We only heard from one of the neighbors about this proposed development, so it would have been nice to at least been given notice.
Yeah, we actually just built the house on Westwood Road June of last year, and one of the things that we loved about that lot was the privacy. And when we found out about this, you know, you could pretty much see our property line there, just at the top of it where it says Z6 around the yellow line there, but one of the things that we loved about this lot was the privacy. And when we found out about this, that basically our privacy is going to be gone. So I don't know if there's any sort of stipulation or recommendation to put in to have, keep somewhat of our privacy there. You know, that is such a great natural habitat. We've got a lot of wildlife back there, we have two hawks, a beautiful owl that, you know, can't really find that much in Smyrna anymore. So again, it's just one of those lots that we just love when we bought it, so any sort of stipulation to put out there to at least regain our privacy back is, whether it's four houses, three houses, seven houses, whatever it might be, especially with streetlights there, that's going to be imposing on our property, our view, we have such a beautiful view back there, so again, any sort of stipulation to put in there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z6? We have about a minute left. Okay, not seeing and hearing any, we'll end this portion of the discussion. This is in District 2, that is the area that I cover, so I'll lead the discussion on this. I do appreciate hearing from all of the neighbors. Eight showed up here today. I've heard from those eight and at least that many more, emails, phone calls, a couple of face-to-face meetings, so I've heard you, I've been out to the site. Just so you folks will know, we visit these sites, we do go out and look at them. I was out there just two or three days ago, and one of your neighbors was very vigilant and watched me like a hawk. In fact, she got in her car and followed me out of the subdivision to be sure I wasn't casing her house, but that's okay, I appreciate. We would do the same thing where I live, which is literally right down the street, but we have been out there. I've been there, I've walked the property, all of it, so I do know what we're talking about here with the lay of the land. As far as the privacy goes that James and Ann talked about, your area sits higher than this. You're going to look down on it. There's not much we can do other than possibly a few fewer houses, a few less houses, but you're going to be looking down on it, and no fencing or plantings that you would put in there can really give you total privacy that you have now. But I do appreciate from hearing from everyone, what I've heard and what I really have known because I live in this area myself, I live closer to Smyrna, actually, I know that this is an older neighborhood. I know this neighborhood has been there for many decades. Some of the people that live on Lee Road and the surrounding roads have lived there for 20 and 30 or more years. I also know that RA5 zoning, which is a much higher density zoning than we have seen recently in this area, I know that there's a lot of that RA5 in the area. It is surrounding this area. What makes this particular zoning request unique in my mind is this request is right square in the middle of the remaining 25 to 35 homes that are zoned R20. It's right in the middle. It's not on the perimeter, it's not adjoining other RA5 developments. So these people feel squeezed, and they feel, and we heard some of it mentioned here this morning, I had, those of you who emailed me directly were a little bit more specific, but you've had problems with other builders. Now, it's not to say that this builder will be a bad builder and not do what they're supposed to do, but you're leery because of things like, I had one person tell me a delivery truck ran over their mailbox. Another person on Lee Road said the same thing, and they promised that they would come and fix it, and we're sorry, we won't let that happen again, and that's been well over a year ago, and the mailbox is still damaged and hadn't been replaced. There were promises made about controlling stormwater runoff right next to Mr. Vaughn's property. I know for a fact that that never happened, and he's still getting some pretty serious damage there whenever we have a heavy runoff event, a heavy rain. Stormwater is an issue for this site, and the more houses you have, the greater the problems are in trying to control it, especially those homes that are downstream. There's not a creek there, we thought there was, as Garvis indicated, it's a drainage ditch, and it does run pretty full whenever there's a heavy rain event. So the potential for stormwater issues is clearly there, and clearly these neighbors feel squeezed and put upon with more and more RA5 development coming into the area. This is a small property. It's 1.89 acres, less than two acres. To put eight tracks here, seven homes, and one for a detention facility seems to me to be really tight. I wouldn't like it if I lived there, quite frankly, I just wouldn't. I think that's asking a bit much. So I do think this is going to be developed, I think this builder's a quality builder with some nice home plans that will fit in quite well, but I'm beginning to think that seven is too many homes along with the detention pond, which makes eight tracks on this very small area. So that's kind of what my thinking is. Questions or comments from the other members? Kristy?
I agree with you, and I, just some general comments about RA5. You know, I see that it's becoming kind of a trend in the area, but this is infill development in my mind, it's a redevelopment of R20 property to something much more dense, and I'm not sure that 1.89 acres is enough property for a subdivision. I don't like the way this takes a piece out of an area that's completely R20. I almost think that we should consider some guidelines that would require some kind of minimum acreage for RA5 in a situation like this, because it is infill, it doesn't look right. I think zoning is about more than just the density and what's in the area. We have to consider the way the rest of the neighborhood might continue to develop or redevelop, and when you take a really small piece of property that's less than two acres and change it to this degree, I don't think it's a really great way to do land use. And there's a reason that zoning isn't an administrative process, so even though we're not necessarily all zoning experts like the staff, I think these are things that we can see and consider, and there's a reason that the neighborhood surrounding has an opportunity to comment on cases like this. So a reduced density, I think, might help. I certainly think there's not enough room for the mail kiosk and the guest parking that's going to be required. I don't see this being able to get through plan review without some other variances. So I'll support whatever you decide to do, Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Kristy. The word that came to mind immediately, which really reinforces what Ms. Trombetti just said, what I noticed immediately was compatibility. Is this compatible with the existing neighborhood? Because there are people that have called me and emailed me that have lived there for many years who said, "We're not going anywhere," and it just doesn't seem right that the county might allow these very large, very dense developments right in the middle of my neighborhood. That's a compatibility issue. That's what kept coming back to me. Skip.
Yeah, I was struck by that word, compatibility, too. When I look at this, putting a cul-de-sac in there just doesn't fit. Seven lots plus the detention pond doesn't fit. I heard a number of the people in opposition talk about four lots, and to me, that seems like that makes a lot of sense. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Skip. Judy?
I think it has, it does have a lot of RA5 in the neighborhood and some RA4 in the neighborhood, but obviously, we would have liked it better if it had been all of this track coming in, and we could have done more with it, but I think with it being such a small track, to reduce the number of lots, and I also agree with Mary Rose, I think the distance between the buildings, too, if you do it 15 feet between the buildings, it's going to look more in keeping with what's surrounding it. But I think we're on the right track of reducing the number of houses, but I'd like to see us meet, if we do the distance between the houses, I don't believe he has to have the parking, that overflow parking that's required, so that might be something to look at, too.
I see Rock's not in the audience, so he made me promise we would cover guest parking for him, that's our fire marshal.
If it's 15, John, no, right, if he didn't have to do it.
If it's 20, it's 20. He needs 20 feet to require no guest parking.
If we reduce some lots and have it 20 feet, then he doesn't have to have the overflow.
Possibly.
Then it would look more residential in nature.
I'll just throw in a couple things, I echo what they said, but I also have concerns about a private road. With private roads, you don't have to meet the same setback requirements and all those things, so I think the road ought to be public, and also, I don't like the private detention pond, because that would be very onerous on such a small area.
Yeah, Mary Rose made that point, and I think that's a valid point as well. Garvis, come on back up, and let's talk about a few of these issues. Where'd Garvis go? There he is. Well, he's coming. We had one lady, I've forgotten who it was, said, "We don't want any roads off of Lee." Well, that can't happen, you can't develop the property if you don't have some access off of Lee, but talk to me about, Mary Rose mentioned it makes no sense to have an HOA with such a small development, so let's assume for a moment, we haven't voted yet, but we're going to recommend something less than seven homes. Does it make sense to have an HOA for a very small development like this?
Absolutely. People that move in houses or purchase homes that are $700,000, $800,000 and greater, they really expect there to be some participation from the other houses with respect to either landscaping or common area. If there ends up being fencing, then fencing, and also detention in the streets in this particular case. And by the way, the street meets the county's requirements in all respects, with respect to width, the substance in terms of the surface and whatnot. The detention meets all the county requirements. If you want to make the street public, do so. If you want to make the detention public, do so. That's fine with us. That might eliminate the need for an HOA, but quite candidly, if I'm moving in this subdivision and the situation is presented to me like this, I would much prefer there to be a mandatory HOA and that there be protective covenants with respect to fencing and architecture particularly, and other things of that nature.
I tend to agree with you. I think that the value of these homes and the price points of these homes would dictate that an HOA should be there and could probably handle the maintenance requirements that might come up, so I think we're okay there. Under the current plan of seven homes and one detention lot, are we looking at 10 feet between homes, 15 feet? It was hard to tell from the plan.
Yeah, no, we're not looking at 10 feet, a minimum of 15 feet between homes. If it's below 20 in any instance, then that's when the .5 parking spaces per unit kicks in.
Right.
We'll be no more than 15 feet.
Okay.
Or no less than 15 feet, excuse me.
The plan says five foot.
Yeah, it's hard to tell from the plan. The plan was very nonspecific, and it was really difficult to tell.
Well, you know, at this juncture, you don't usually see lot-fit plans, but you know, I guess we could, we can certainly do that if you like.
Okay, as far as guest parking and the location of a kiosk, that will be handled at what we call plan review, which has to occur where the applicant comes in and they sit down with department heads, and they go through all of the rules that they have to comply with, and so that would be taken care of there. One person said to me that they felt like you were, or at least the applicant, was offering fencing. Are there fences being offered other than the detention area?
The fencing issue has not been advanced by us. Obviously, my clients think that trees, as opposed to fences, sell property, and if you fence property, it looks more like a stockade, even with the faux wrought iron that Mary Rose was talking about across the front, so no fences are planned. But when that issue was brought up the other night, since I revised the stipulation letter, I said, "Well, if a neighbor's going to put in a fence once they move in, then we sure as heck want them to all be uniform and substantially compliant with architectural style and composition you're seeing there from Caldwell Klein." So no, no fences are planned.
So that fencing issue would be resolved in the HOA, by the HOA?
In the form of the enforceability of the protective covenants.
Enforceability, yeah, the covenants, okay. What about sodding? Several people mentioned sodding all the yards, not just the front.
Well, we are going to sod the front and the side yards, and Mr. Porter's right. When you've got private streets, it gives you the latitude to move the house forward a little bit, and it gives people an opportunity, if the impervious surface requirement allows it to do outdoor fireplaces, patios, pools, whatever. We just think it's more appropriate to not mandate a sodded backyard and give folks the latitude to have their size and the front sodded and irrigated, and then to have the backyard for recreation purpose, they may prefer it sod, but to mandate, it seems a little invasive.
Okay. One couple indicated they had not received notice about this. I know you know the rules, letters, I'm assuming, did go out?
Yes, sir, and at the meeting the other night, there was some confusion, so I brought both of the postal service certifications that we submitted to the zoning division, also had an aerial photograph of both of those that showed the circumference, 1,000 feet around this property and around Z22, which you're going to hear in a little bit, to show that there was some overlapping, and then some people might, and Westwood might have gotten one, and some on Lee may have or may not have, but we did do it, and we certified that to Mr. Peterson, and that's in the record.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions from Garvis? Okay, Garvis, you can have a seat if you want to.
Thanks, Chairman.
With no other questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion for Z6 that we, and this gets to be an issue, I'd like some comments here from the group up here. I've looked at the numbers pretty carefully on this. I'm considering five homes with R12 zoning, because it absolutely fits that to a T. Any objections to that, R12? I think it'll work. I think if we do that, and that will be my motion for Z6 to approve five homes, deleting to R12 zoning. The numbers work such that we can pretty easily do this with very few, if any, variances needed, so that would solve a lot of our issues. It also takes a couple of houses off the property, which I think will better allow the applicant to control stormwater runoff, which is a real concern of those people that live downstream. I did hear from those people that live down from this, and they're really concerned that we make every effort to handle that. And I even had a comment from our stormwater engineer that if we could just find a way to reduce one or two houses from this, it would really make everyone's job a lot easier. So I think that's the way that I'd like to go. So I will make that motion, subject to all staff comments and recommendations, including DOT, Stormwater Management, Water and Sewer, and the Fire Department, and subject to the revised stip letter from Mr. Sam's dated 2/26, I believe, with the following changes, and I hope that these changes and additions will take care of some of the issues that were raised by the people who testified. On the first page of the letter dated February 26 from Mr. Sam's, item number two, we should change RA5 to R12 zoning, as I mentioned. On the second page, let's see, item number three, we should change that to a maximum number of five homes with a density of 2.64 units per acre, which would be the math on that. Item number four on the second page, let's see here. It has to do with the composition of the homes. I would like to add to the end of that, all sides to be a combination of brick, stone, cedar shake, and siding with no vinyl used whatsoever. So we can do that. Go down to item number five, these are labeled A, B, C, and D, so five D. At the end of that sentence, having to do with the detention area, I would add a fence, or to be fenced with a dark vinyl-coated chain link fence, this is the stormwater detention area, of a height not less than five feet tall with landscaping around, to be approved by the county arborist at plan. by the county arborist at Plan Review. So, we want some nice landscaping there. I want to add an item 5F, which reads, "To the extent possible, any street lighting that will be utilized, or monument sign lighting must be environmentally friendly, such that the illumination and glare from same does not penetrate onto the adjoining properties." And there are lights available that do that, so we'd like those kinds of environmentally-friendly lights to be used. We've talked about the guest parking, I think we'll be okay there, and the mail kiosk. Number nine F, at the end of that, this has to do with the traffic calming devices, which we didn't really talk about, but Garvis indicated to the neighbors and to me that he was willing to assist, as he could, with the installation of traffic calming devices. This does not mean that the applicant will add the traffic calming devices. It means that he can give advice to the neighbors about how that can be accomplished, and frankly, if you put a petition together and submit that to the right people at DOT, speed bumps might be able to be put in. So, I'm going to add to number F, nine F, the words "as determined by Cobb DOT," so Garvis can advise you on how to accomplish that. Number 12 has to do with complying with the Fire Department and Fire Marshal's requirements. That should read, "Compliance with recommendations from the Cobb Fire Department and Fire Marshal with respect to fire prevention, life safety issues, and guest parking requirements. The location and number of guest spaces, if needed," I'm not sure they'll be needed, "if needed, will be determined at Plan Review." Item number 13 has to do with the construction hours. I appreciate that Garvis put those in there. I had several people tell me they weren't quite what they wanted to see, so I'd like to recommend changing 13A to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, B to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, C, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays only, D, no work on Sundays, and E has to do with parking of construction vehicles. At the end of that sentence, add, "And no parking allowed on Lee Road." Number 14, let's see, has to do with structures on the property. Garvis, you can nod. Where are you sitting? Any structures on the property now? There is one, okay. Number 14 has to do with steps to be taken for those properties, the structures that are on the house. I'd like to add to the end of that sentence on 14, "Any on-site existing structures will be boarded up within 60 days of BOC approval and demolished within 120 days of BOC approval." Turning over to the last page, 15 is fine, has to do with minor modifications. I want to add a number 16. Let's see, no, I don't think I do. That has to do with the distance between homes, which we don't really know what those will be, so I think we'll be fine. That's all I can think of. Come on up, Garvis. Yeah, let's add another item to make the detention pond and the street public. Let's just do that. Okay, all agree with that?
It's R-12, I think.
R-12, we can do that. Okay. Let's get the motion made first, and then we'll have discussion. That would be my motion. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Second from Kristi. Now, any further discussion, anyone?
May I ask one question? I've never heard of ground-based monument-style lighting, and I had decorative lighting, so I don't know what that means.
Is your monument sign to be lit?
Oh, I thought you meant the lighting. The subdivision entrance signage will be lit, or lighted, whatever the word is, but I thought you were talking about my decorative lighting had to be.
Decorative lighting needs to be environmentally-friendly. If you have lighting, spotlights, for example, on the monument sign, we just don't want those to glare into the neighbors' property.
I see, okay, but we're fine, you're fine with the decorative lighting within the subdivision, long as it's low.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion? So, that's the way we'll go. Thank you all very much. I appreciate all the input from the neighbors. Thank you, folks. If you do choose to leave at this time, please do so quietly, because we're going to move right on with the next case.
Res zoning case Z-10, AP Homes Incorporated, request rezoning from R-80 to R-20 for the purpose of single-family residential in landlot 1052 of the 16th District. Property is located on the south side of Lower Roswell Road, east of Old Canton Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-10?
No.
Just keep your hands raised. Let the record show there are five people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Again, if you think you might want to testify, come on up, and let's get swearing-in done at one time. Doesn't mean you have to testify. Marilyn, I believe you have a thumb drive.
I do, I'm waiting for him to.
Okay.
There it is.
Okay, tell us your name, and whenever you're ready, go ahead and get started.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Marilyn Weitzel, Atlanta Communities Realtor, representing builder Alan Purvinian, President and CEO of AP Homes. Also present is Mike Broadbear, Mr. Purvinian's attorney. It is proposed to rezon the 1.8-acre vacant 3140 Lower Roswell Road property from R-80 to R-20, on which builder AP Homes plans to build two luxury estate homes. The R-20 zoning is in keeping with or exceeds that of the surrounding subdivisions, Sentinel Lakes and Somerset also being R-20, while adjacent Collinwood is just R-15. Price point of the new homes will be high 900s, which will enhance the property values of nearby Somerset, where the homes are selling in the 300,000 to 400,000 range, Sentinel Lakes, 500,000, and Collinwood, 400,000 to 700,000. AP Homes CEO, Alan Purvinian, brings 22 years' experience to the building business. He has been an independent builder since 2005. Since that time, he has built eight million-dollar homes in the Duluth-St. Ives subdivision, 29 East Cobb homes in the 700,000 to 1 million range, as well as two homes in Sandy Springs selling at 1.1 and 1.5 million respectively. Here you see the site plan. Note the placement of the two homes with a common driveway. Lot one in the forefront is about 3/4 of an acre, while lot two is just a little over an acre. The lot is abutted by three subdivisions, Collinwood on the left, Somerset on the rear, and the Pepe property on the right side. Mr. Purvinian and myself have met with these homeowners on several occasions to share their concerns, as well as keeping them informed as the project progressed. As a result, the driveway has been moved an additional six feet from the Collinwood property line to a total of 12 feet. The four-foot retaining wall, which runs partway up the lot, will be constructed of decorative allen block stone, and will slope away from the Collinwood subdivision onto the 3140 Roswell lot, so there will be no dripping of water or silt onto the Collinwood subdivision. The builder has assured the homeowners he will attempt to spare as many trees as possible during the construction in order to enhance the natural beauty of the landscape. The builder and I have also met with Somerset homeowners to the rear, as well as Mr. Pepe on the opposite side, to inform them of plans for development. The builder plans to extend a matching common fence, fronting the Pepe property at the conclusion of construction. As deemed necessary for the privacy of the new homeowners and Mr. Pepe, a stand of Leyland Cypress and/or other shrubbery will be planted. The exterior of each of the two luxury homes will be four-sided brick with stone accents and a side entry three-car garages to be used for vehicle parking only. No vinyl siding will be utilized on either dwelling. No variances are anticipated in the development of these proposed lots. The homes will consist of approximately 4,800 square feet, in addition to unfinished full basements, and will be in substantial conformity to the renderings shown. The latest trends in high-end appliances and fixtures, designer trim work, and superior quality construction will be featured in these estate homes. Here is a preliminary landscape rendering. Two changes not shown are the removal of the plantings from the right-of-way and a deletion of the magnolia off to the right there, which would have been on the sewer easement. A final rendition will be drawn as permits are granted. The final plan will be approved by Community Development County Arborist at Plan Review. All yards will be sodded and irrigated. A sewer line will originate across Lower Roswell Road and bore under the road to the property. A sewer permit has been issued. Cobb County DOT has been sent a copy of the site plan for their evaluation. One curb cut off Lower Roswell Road will service both homes with a common driveway. The driveway will be widened to 16 feet at the street in order to allow for the passage of two cars at that point, which has already been approved by the DOT engineer. Any curb, sidewalk, or landscaping that would be disturbed during the construction will be restored to its original condition by the builder. And then for general comments, the builder agrees to comments and recommendations of Cobb County Storm Sewer Management. They will make final recommendations upon reviewing the grading plan for the building permit. All construction and delivery vehicles will remain on-site and will not park on Lower Roswell or side streets. Applicant agrees to comply with all Cobb County ordinances and standards unless authorized by BOC. Applicant further agrees to allow District Commissioner to make minor modifications to this site plan. I'll now turn it over to the attorney, Mr. Broadbear, who has some additional comments.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and members and neighbors. I am here as an attorney representing AP Homes. My name is Mike Broadbear. I've had over 50 years of experience in this business, and I'm still learning. We want to and will be good neighbors with all concern. We want to and will comply with the laws, rules, and regulations of Cobb County. Our site plans and drawings confirm this fact. We have the builder and the engineer here to answer any questions, as you may have at a later time. One of the key Cobb County zoning ordinances we are relying on is Section 134-197-R-20, which relates to single-family residential district. Subsection 5 states in its entirety, "Landscape buffer and screening requirements are not applicable to this district. This does not mean that we are insensitive to the privacy and requirements, and of course, building $2 million houses, we are as concerned about privacy as they are. What we don't want, and what we can't have, is they're controlling a buffer zone, is they're controlling and saying, "Your trees are too short, or your trees are too tall, or your bushes are too short, or your bushes are too tall." This is what they have asked for, basically, in the letter, which they have sent to Mr. Terry, Ms. Roth, and others. This is a real problem for us. We want control of our property, and we don't want to give control to an HOA, which we don't belong to, which we have no vote in. And we appreciate what they, we've already moved the sidewalk over, the driveway over. We'll probably move the retaining wall over a little bit, but what we don't want is we don't want, on a daily basis, some sort of, "Well, you need to raise the lip of the driveway another inch and a half." The driveway slopes away from these folks at this point in time, but they have, in the letter, defined and requested, like any good HOA would define, they will tell you how to paint your door. We have attempted to accommodate the neighbors, and we will continue to do so. We are proud of our luxury homes and the expertise that's gone into them. Our homes are solid, well-built, beautiful, elegant, and they will add to the value of the neighborhood. They are not going to impact negatively, as again, in the letter. Their homes would not have been allowed if, in fact, those stipulations that they are asking us to stipulate to were in place. There are 15, there are 11 houses would not have been placed on approximately the same-sized lot as our two houses. We feel certainly these homes that we will build, will be sold to very fine, upstanding families, and will enhance the neighborhood. Thank you for your attention. We reserve time for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Broadbear. We are out of time, so we'll go ahead and close this portion of the hearing. This is also in District 2, so I'm the lucky one that gets to preside over this one.
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon, I'm getting way ahead of myself. Let's hear from the opposition. I do want to hear from you, believe me.
Thank you for letting us speak, sir.
No problem. Give us your name, please.
My name is George Bartelme. I'm the President of the Collinwood Homeowners Association. I'm here representing the homeowners association, and specifically, the owners of lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, that in our community would join this property. The proposed plan for the development of this property on Lower Roswell Road will severely impact the value of all of our homes in Collinwood, and in particular, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4. His plan that he put up was very small, and it's unfortunate that you can't see it, but he has, on the plan that we have, it shows a 35-foot driveway easement, beginning at our property lines. And then he, which means that if he's going to put his driveways 12 feet from the property line, that means that all these beautiful trees that are between our two properties, which is a natural buffer, and actually, it's natural screening for his people as well, there must be 40 trees along this stretch of property, and that's within the 15 feet that we asked for. This would be a visual screen for his people, because we're 15 to 20 feet below their place where they're going to be putting their house, number one, which means that those people are going to be looking at our roofs, and so if you can keep the trees, we'll have this visual screen there. So, what we're specifically requesting, the first thing was, that the zoning specifically says that only two houses can be built on this property. They've agreed to that, but I think it needs to be part of the zoning. That a 15-foot tree protection buffer be established from the rear lines of lots 1, 2, 3, and 4. The developer's indicated he would try to save as many trees as possible, but his proposed plan shows retaining wall six feet, now he's saying it may be 12 feet. But to build that and put the road at 12 feet, you're going to have to cut down all these trees. The construction of the retaining walls 12 feet from our property would without question result in the removing of a large stand of mature hardwoods that are located on the property lines, and in our opinion, the removal of the vegetation would result in silt and erosion coming onto lots 1, 2, and 3, and 4. We ask for, as part of this establishment of 15-foot buffer, we feel that saving these hardwoods would greatly diminish the chance of Collinwood properties and the homeowners being the recipient of silt and debris. The lot at 3140 Lower Roswell Road is sufficiently wide to accommodate the drive the developer proposes, and to install the requested tree protection buffer, and save Collinwood homeowners' backyards. The property is over 230 feet wide. The property is over 230 feet wide. We're talking about a 15-foot tree buffer. He's talking about a 30-foot driveway easement, or 35-foot driveway easement, 30 or 35?
30.
30. So, okay, that's 45 feet. He's got a 20-foot sewer easement on the other side, so that's 65. Normal houses are 70 to 80 feet wide. I'm not sure what he's proposing, but that still leaves like 95 feet for him to adjust his houses and put in all the rest of his amenities around this property. So, again, we don't feel that what we're asking for is anything that's going to diminish the value of his property, but yet it would do a lot for ours. Sam Pierce would like to speak a little bit additionally about the tree issue and other issues.
Thank you. Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity. As said, I'm Sam Pierce. I reside on Helen Court, 136, and that's Lot 4. Couple of other points dealing with the tree buffer. And I'd like to rebut what Mr. Broadbear said because I think that is a blatant misrepresentation to this very fine body. We have not said we want to control the height of trees that are put in, that we're going to sit over there and dictate to you that. No. What we have made is a very, very reasonable proposition, this was a very reasonable request, and that is for this 15-foot buffer. And there are multiple reasons for it. George has addressed some. Let me address a couple of others. When we go with what they're talking about...
You need to stay at the microphone. We can't record you.
Yes, okay. All right. Then when we go with what they're talking about, it's going to result in some damage to trees that are on our property, damage to the root system, which is then going to, sometime down the road, result in their death and cause us to have to have those trees removed. Also, the topography of the land is significant. We are a goodly number of feet below the level of this property, and having a driveway that close to it is going to have compaction shearing forces on the soil, which then, on at least three of the properties, is supported by retaining walls on my property, on George's property, and on other properties, which is going to result in damage there. What we're talking about here, what we're specifically requesting, is less than 4% of the frontage property. We're saying have the buffer extend 15 feet to protect the property. That is like 0.39%. So we're not asking for any kind of gigantic intrusion into that. Then, one other thing. I don't know that there was any kind of stipulation that had been proposed by the builder about hours of construction, but I would like some type of limitation on that. Specifically, I have a very, very compelling reason for that, and that is, I have a daughter. She is in college right now, but she suffers from chronic daily migraines. One of her coping mechanisms is getting sleep. And so having early construction, having weekend construction, and loud noises are not going to be beneficial to her health when she's home this summer from college. So I don't know what is fair. I don't know what is reasonable, but I do not want it to be unfettered for that reason alone. So, also, one last thing, and it may have been included in what has been proposed, and that is to have the arborist conduct a study, see what kind of repercussion there may be upon some of these trees in and around that we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay. Just to cover the rest of the information that was in our letter, I believe they have covered that they would agree that any walls that are exposed to our property would have stone or fieldstone. They mentioned that they would do that. They also mentioned that the driveway, which we were concerned with because it's about 350 feet of concrete, that they would slope it away from our property. Again, we're so far below that any water that comes over that driveway is going to go right downhill into our patios and our backyards, and we've asked for a lip on the eastern edge of the property that would stop any overflow from coming onto our property. Those are our concerns. We hope that you can help us, and your appreciation to alleviating these concerns is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Jill, come on up.
My name is Jill Flem. I'm with East Cobb Civic Association, and our case manager was not able to make it here today. We are not opposing this application, but however, we have not seen a stipulation letter. A lot of the things that the applicant presented today, we would recommend be put into a stipulation letter, including our conversations with Mr. Pepe. To the West indicated that the applicant was willing to install a wrought iron fence with brick columns to match that of his house, and in addition to some Leyland cypress along the western edge of the property. In addition, if a stipulation letter is written, we would recommend that the current language be used for minor modification rather than just the District Commissioner language that was proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marilyn, you want to come back up, and let's address a few of these issues real quick.
Do you swear?
Yeah, let's let you do that. Just for the record, there is a stipulation letter, and I think most of the things that Ms. Flem mentioned is covered in the stip letter, so we'll get that one out of the way. The first plan that I know was discussed, or that I saw, had the driveway right on the lot line. It was then placed 6 feet away from the lot line. It's now 12 feet away from the lot line. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The edge of the driveway is 12 feet away from the property line.
Okay. Is there any room to move it a little further?
The reason we cannot move it any further because the driveway is very steep when it comes to the house. If we move the driveway closer to the house, we'll have such upward parking going to the house.
Okay. I'm sorry. Did you put your name on the record? Just tell us your name. Did you tell...
Alan Parvignon. I'm the builder.
I knew you, but I need to get that on the record.
Yes, sir. And the other reason is that we don't want both of these houses to be right behind each other. They have no visibility from the street. And I've told them many times that I will do my best not to cut any tree, but we have 12 feet of a buffer zone already, so we will not touch those 12 feet. And then we have a... And the elevation is upward, so there is no water or silt going to their subdivision, to their property line at all. And we're proposing for a retaining wall at the bottom of the driveway, so it will stop any silt or water going to their subdivision.
That's... The wall was another question I had. Describe the wall for me. How tall? How long?
The tallest part will be about four feet, sir, and it's going to be made of allen blocks.
And you are agreeing to face it with stone?
Yes, sir.
A stone facade that faces...
Well, it is designer blocks already. We don't need to add any stone to it.
Allen blocks are designer stone.
Okay. I got you.
And we still have room to move that maybe another two feet towards the driveway.
Okay.
We are very flexible with that retaining wall.
Are you agreeable to adding, I'll call it a curved lip on one side?
Yes, sir.
To be sure the water is channeled away from their property?
Yes, sir. Definitely. Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. The driveway really cannot... One person asked me why we can't move it to the other side of the property. You can't do that because there's a sewer easement on that side. And I understand not wanting to move it toward the middle of the property. That really, from a design standpoint, would make no sense at all. I do think the drainage issue is going to be taken care of, so I believe we're okay. Why don't you folks stick around, but have a seat? Dave Braden, could I get you to step up to the mic, please? Let's get someone from our Stormwater Management Department.
Yes, sir. Dave Braden with the Stormwater Management Division. Pardon my voice today.
That's okay. I know you have been out to site. You've looked at it, and we've spoken about it at our work session. Do you think what they're proposing with the wall, the driveway, and so forth, do you think that's going to be adequate to keep water from channeling over to their property at Collingwood next door?
Yes, and I did stipulate that there needs to be a grading plan approved by Stormwater so we can make sure that how they do the grading and put the wall in and the driveway does meet those requirements, as well as the drainage to the rear that we have really discussed.
Well, that was my next question. Talk to me about the drainage at the rear. Are there any issues there that...
Yeah, Somerset's an older subdivision. There actually is a huge drainage easement to the rear of this property in that subdivision. I think it's like 40 feet wide, which is like double what we normally require, but there was never any conveyance put in there. And there are some drainage, existing drainage issues there, so have stipulated that, or requested that they provide a drywall on that rear, the part of that lot, the house that drains to the rear, so we don't have any concentrated discharge that would exaggerate that problem back there, so.
Okay. Okay. That's good.
Take care of that as well, so.
I think that'll do it. Thank you, Dave. Jane, can I get you to come up real quick? We'll have someone from DOT address one issue that was raised by one of the speakers.
Good morning. I'm Jane Strickland with DOT.
We heard someone mention a concern about the curb cut. They're wanting to utilize the existing curb cut. Does it need to be modified at all, in your opinion?
It does. Right now, the existing curb cut would not allow for two vehicles to pass in the event that that would happen. So if there was a vehicle exiting the site, then a vehicle would have to wait on Lower Roswell Road, stop traffic, to be able to come in. So we'd ask for it to be widened to just accommodate the two-way traffic.
So basically, in the same location as the existing curb cut, but just improved and widened to meet code?
The existing curb cut is right on the edge of the property. It's the way the driveway was angled. I believe there's a different site plan than the one that's shown, or the ones that have been kind of shown this morning are a little bit different than what was shown in the book, because it would take a very sharp turn. Because the driveway, like I said, you can see it up to the kind of north, a little further over.
Mm-hmm.
That's the existing driveway, almost where that white, front of the white car is. So you see it turns very quickly.
So hopefully, a lot of that can be taken care of when they redesign and repave that.
Right. Now, the challenge is, you see there is a catch basin. You can kind of see the manhole on top of it, right there. So the driveway probably would need to be moved to the other side. By moving it to the other side makes their driveway, actually, with the striping on the road even as the driveway's shown, it's going to be a right-in, right-out.
So it would be a right-in, right-out?
Yes.
Okay. So that's going to be your recommendation then for that?
Yes.
So it has to move beyond that catch basin, be widened, and would become a right-in, right-out?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're happy to work with them during Plan Review on getting the location and width right.
Okay. Okay. Good enough. Thank you very much. Any questions for Jane before she sits down? Thank you, Jane.
Thanks.
Okay. I believe that answers all of my questions. Any further comments by you folks? As you've seen, we can't bring you back up at this point. We're going... I'm sorry. We've closed the comment section. So as you've all seen, this is a very large lot, a large wooded lot. It's, by my calculation, about 475 feet deep down the longest side, 185 feet across the back, and over 200 on the street side. So it's a very large lot. It's currently zoned R80, which is a very large zoning category. Mr. Parvignon is asking to go to R20. This is not an unusual request. He wants to build two large upscale homes there that'll be valued at $900,000 and above. One curb cut only on Lower Roswell Road, which I think is appropriate. We heard Jane mention about the improvements that will need to be made there. That'll be handled at Plan Review, and that'll have to be done, so that will be taken care of. The challenge here is to create privacy for the two new homeowners, to provide privacy for those neighbors that have lived there, especially in Collingwood, for a number of years, and then to be sure that we have stormwater runoff control so that the neighbors don't have any damage from a heavy rain event. I have talked to Mr. Parvignon. I have had a number of conversations with Marilyn. I've heard from George and some of the other neighbors there. I do understand the concerns, but the words that I kept hearing from Alan and Marilyn routinely, "We want to be good neighbors. We will do all that we can to preserve the existing trees on that border with Collingwood." We'll make every attempt to do that. I believe them. I believe that they will. It's evidenced by moving that driveway a good 12 feet. They'll do a little more if they can, but a good 12 feet away from the lot line. Adding that wall is another thing that tells me they're going to do all that they can to support the drive, to channel runoff away from those homes in Collingwood. So I think they're going to make a good faith effort to do all of that, and I'm encouraged by that. The neighbors would like to see it 15 to 18 feet away from the lot line. I don't know that that drive can be moved that far, but I think they're going to make every effort to be good neighbors in that respect. They have a strong desire in that area, so I'm convinced that they will. I want to think about these trees for a minute. Some of the trees on this site clearly will be saved. I think most of them will be. But realistically, if you disturb the ground around an established hardwood tree, it's a gamble. It is just a gamble. Hardwoods don't have taproots. They have feeder roots that go out from the base of the tree to the drip line and maybe even beyond. If you disturb down about 18 inches, the tree could be damaged. It could even die, and it may not die right away. It might die a year or two years later. That's the gamble that you take. Mr. Parvignon says he understands that, and he's going to be at least 12 feet away from those trees and make every attempt to save them. It benefits him and his chance to sell these. It also benefits the neighbors. So have to understand that if he leaves these trees and they die a year or two from now, who's responsible? Either he is, depending on the arrangement he makes with his buyers, or the new buyer will be responsible. So it's something that I know he has considered. So I believe that we're going to have two beautiful homes here that won't have a negative impact on the neighborhood. I think the stormwater issues are going to be resolved. I think that they will do some nice landscaping. They have a good agreement with Mr. Pepe next door about the fencing and landscaping there, and so I'm prepared to make a motion unless we have other comments. Anybody else? Given all this background, I'm going to propose that we move to approve Z10 for R20 zoning, subject to all staff comments and recommendations, including Stormwater Management, Water and Sewer, Fire Department, and DOT, and subject to the stip letter, which we do have a stipulation letter received, let's see, revised stip letter and revised site plan received February the 18th with a few additions and changes. Now, the stip letter that Marilyn composed and was approved by Mr. Alan Parvignon doesn't have bullets. It's not numbered, so I'm going to attempt to direct our staff where these changes might be. On the first page of the stipulation letter dated February the 17th, it does mention two luxury estate homes. I'd like to have that to read, a maximum of two, which was suggested by George. I think that's a reasonable request, so we'll do that. A maximum of two luxury estate homes. On the second page, in the fifth paragraph, where it begins, "The builder agrees with the Stormwater Management suggestions." At the end of that sentence, I would like to add, "Applicant further agrees to add a curb-like shape to the eastern side of the driveway to promote channeling of runoff away from the Collingwood subdivision." So we'll take care of that. On the last page, in the third paragraph from the top, it mentions minor modifications. That needs a little bit of clarification. We do have a standard form that we like to use. So on that paragraph, we should say, can approve, the District Commissioner can approve minor modifications, except for those, and this is quite lengthy, that increase the density of the project, that reduce the size of any of the agreed-to buffers on the site plan, except for those that relocate the structure closer to a property line of an adjacent property as shown on the final site plan, except for those that increase the height of any building, except that that was approved, except for those that change the access point to a different location, except for that which was approved, and except for those that would be in direct conflict with or contradiction to Cobb County codes and zoning ordinances. So that would be added at that paragraph, at the very end of that paragraph. In the next paragraph, which is the fourth one from the top of the page, the last page, there's a sentence that reads, "Final landscape plan, etc." I would delete that in its entirety and replace it with the following. "No plantings over the existing sewer easement or in the right-of-way will be allowed." Now Marilyn alluded to that, but that was not in the stip letter, so we're going to add that. "No plantings on the sewer easement or in the right-of-way will be allowed." Period. After that, it should read, "No perimeter landscaping will take place until the final landscape plan has been reviewed and approved by the District Commissioner." Now my thought there is, that will... Now my thought there is, that will allow plenty of time for Alan, the neighbors, and his landscape architect to discuss what should be planted, where. Alan has told me that there's going to be some plantings added, probably cryptomaria or some other evergreen, large evergreen trees, especially on the side borders. But the neighbors have said they'd like to have some input into that. This gives us time to do that. At the end of that sentence, I would add further, well, that was about the retaining wall. I don't think we need to face it with stone. Alan, you can nod if that's correct. We're not going to face it with stone because it's a stacked attractive wall anyway. So we'll leave that one out. The, the next paragraph down has to do with the Pepe property, which is off to the right, and your agreement with him about extending his fence. We need to add to that, that the width, that, that the, the fencing that was agreed to will be extended. It says full length, but it's actually should be full width. Am I correct there? The full width of the property on the northern lot line facing Roswell Road. So you're going to go across the front and extend the fencing that Mr. Pepe already has there, and we'll include matching brick columns. That was the agreement. So we'll put that in there just to be sure. And at the very last, at the end of this, we need to add, "Construction hours on this site will be limited to Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00, and no work on Sundays." So I think that covers it. I know Alan, Marilyn, Mr. Broadbear all want to be good neighbors. I trust that you will do that, work with your neighbors, especially in the area of landscaping, and I think we'll have a beautiful development. Any further comments? That would be my motion. Can I get a second? Second from Skip. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Build some pretty houses for us, okay? Thank you very much. We're going to take a quick break. We've been at this for a little while. So we're going to take about a ten-minute break, and we'll be back at about eleven-twenty to resume. Okay, folks, we're back live now after a little, little break. So we'll go ahead and get started. We've decided to make a slight change to the agenda, and I've recommended that we move Z-22 up, and we'll hear that one next. We should be able to hear that one before the lunch break. So around twelve noon, we will have a lunch break for about an hour. But we'll go ahead. John, if you'll call Z-22 next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning case Z-22, Jim Chapman Communities Incorporated, request rezoning from RA-5 and R-20 to RA-5 for the purpose of single-family residential. And landlot 696 of the Seventeenth District. Property is located on the north side of Cooper Lake Drive and West Atlanta Road. The applicant's representative is present. Earlier, there were nine people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Hey. Mr. Sams, go right ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. For the record, again, my name's Garvis Sams. Good morning to you and to the Planning Commission. I represent, in this case, Jim Chapman Communities Incorporated. We have representatives of Jim Chapman here today. Also, we have our engineer, Darryl Cook of Watson Browning Engineers. He's here as well. There's, there's some rather problematic issues on the site, stormwater-wise and having to relocate sewer line and things of that nature. So I thought it would be good to, to have Mr. Cook here, and he agreed to be here as well. Also, we have one of the property owners here with us, Mr. Thornton Morris is here as well. So between all of us, I think we should be able to respond to all the, all the questions that are, that are generated by, by my presentation. The property that you're, you're looking at here, this deals with a 4.60 acre tract of land, which you can see is located on Cooper Lake Drive. The property is zoned RA-5 and is zoned R-20. You can see is split between medium-density residential and low-density residential. But a preponderance of the properties, at least going more towards Atlanta Road, are in the MDR or either commercial classification in the future land use map. You were calling in 2014, we brought this, the same piece forward. It was then a 5.4 acre tract and included properties added to the, to the north of it. So this is a smaller tract this time around. That was for Patrick Malloy Communities. That was for twenty-two homes, at four units per acre. And we also saw at that time, Mr. Chairman, I know you remember this, in an inordinate number of variances because of the number of homes, because of configuration and the odd configuration of the property. So here, you can see that after receiving input from the members of the public and, and from you back in 2014, and by the way, you as a planning commission did recommend approval on the, on the twenty-two lot development. But that, that developer walked from, from the deal, citing contractual reasons and others. And so now we, we've got an equally good, if not better, builder with Mr. Chapman. And today, what he's proposing is a rezoning of the property from R-20 and RA-5 to RA-5 for the purposes of a custom-quality-built, single-family residential, a detached subdivision consisting of a total number of twelve homes, excuse me, sixteen homes at an overall density of 3.48 units per acre. Under its current classification, twelve homes could be built, so we're just increasing the density by, by four homes. And I don't think there's any question that, much like Z-6, the trend in this area is for these type of developments and these type of homes, unlike Z-6, which was hampered by the fact that it didn't have contiguity to, or part of it was not, an RA-5. In this instance, part of this property is already zoned RA-5, is part of another development that didn't come to fruition. And more importantly, it has proximity also to the commercial areas along the Atlanta Road frontage as well. This is in a sub-area that's experiencing just fantastic growth. And there are reasons for that, because of its location, obviously, and because of its positioning on the future land use map. And frankly, because of the, the high end of development that's going in, is the type of demographic that Mr. Chapman and his staff have wanted to attract from the very beginning. Since this was filed, we've interfaced with your professional staff. Your staff has recommended, after an excellent dialogue with them, recommended approval. And once again, I think stats hit the nail on the head in this particular instance. There may be times when they're a little off, but in this instance, they're, they're right on top of things. And you should be in receipt in that, in that respect of my February third stipulation letter, which covers all the, all the particulars of this rezoning. First of all, it, it will be in substantial conformity to this site plan. What you're seeing is a revised site plan. The major difference between this and the first plan really had to do with the positioning of our main point of ingress and egress on Cooper Lake. It was, at the original onset, moved further to the east. And we've moved it as far west as is as practical under the circumstances, in a much better position in terms of the bend in the road and site distance issues. And that revised site plan was filed on, on February the fifteenth. This is a, a development that's going to have real nice homes, averaging somewhere around thirty-five hundred square feet, ranging from a minimum of four, three thousand up to four thousand square feet and greater. Price points are anticipated ranging from six fifty to seven fifty and greater as well. I've handed out, or the clerks handed out to you, the architectural style and composition of the homes. You've got some renderings and elevation showing their exact products that they intend to use. It's not the, it's not the entirety of their product line, but just to give you a flavor of it. You've also got a photograph of one of the homes. I thought it'd be helpful for you to see that, not only the renderings, but also a real photograph of, of the homes that I have handed out to you. The, the landscape plan that we'll have will include a number of things, including tree safe areas to the extent that is possible to do so. Mr. Chapman thinks the trees help sell homes, and I think he's quite right. And as you may recall, when we went through this with Patrick Malloy Communities before, we had Arbor Guard actually do a, a tree specimen and tree preservation and, and tree, I guess you call it reconnaissance of the site. So, so we know where all those specimen trees are, and it's best in our interest to save as many as we can. Front and side yards of all the homes to be constructed will be sited and irrigated. All utilities will be underground. The detention will be fenced much the same manner as, as you stipulated in the last one that we did on, oh, I say "we," that, that I presented on Lee Road. Again, this is twenty-two lots. We think that these price points, it, it certainly sustains a mandatory homeowners association. And in conjunction with that, we'll also do protective covenants that will cover the strict architectural controls and, and other matters such as subdivision entrance signage, landscaping, fencing, and the like. The subdivision entrance sign will be ground-based monument-style. It'll be landscaped. It'll be, it'll be lighted appropriately and, of course, irrigated. DOT, in addition to asking us to move the point of ingress and egress, which we've done, they've asked for the voluntary donation and conveyance of right-of-way twenty-five feet from the center line of North Cooper, I mean of Cooper Lake. And also ensuring adequate site distance of three hundred and ninety feet in, in either direction or either implementing remedial measures in which to mitigate that. We do have, as you can see, positioned the postal kiosk in accordance with the U.S. Postal Service regulations on the revised site plan that you're looking at. The sidewalk curb and gutter will be placed along the frontage of Cooper Lake, and we'll have an additional eight parking spaces that you can see for guest parking in accordance with your regulations. The stormwater management issues on this property are, are interesting. And our discussions with David Braden and his staff have been extremely instructive and meaningful and helpful, I think, both to stormwater and to us. Of course, you can see where we, we have detention. The subject property presently has stormwater flowing through it, obviously. So that's going to continue to flow through the property as, as it does now. Any stormwater that's generated as a result of our impervious surfaces, such as rooftops, driveways, sidewalks, and the like, will go into the detention pond that you see, as shown on the, on the site plan. And we think the positioning of that, coupled with the other infrastructure improvements that are going to be made in terms of relocation, the sewer is going to greatly improve, both from the water system's perspective and the stormwater management division's perspective, those two components on this site. We have talked extensively also with, with Mr. Davidson and the water system. And as I said, the existing sewer line is going to be rerouted in a fashion interior to the residential community. So it's not going to be something that's going to disturb, inhibit, or in any way adversely affect anyone that surrounds the, the property. We have hours of construction that we have stipulated to in the, in the letter. I won't go over those. They're, they're pretty much boilerplate what we typically add. We also said no outside work on Sunday unless approved ahead of time by the district commissioner. But we're willing to modify that so that there's no, no work on Sundays, like, like I think the trend that you're seeing in Commissioner Oates' district. And Chairman Terry, your district is usually, goes in that direction. All the construction workers and vehicles will be parked on the site during construction. We would like to remain or retain the latitude to approach the district commissioner to make minor modifications during the plan review process and thereafter, limited by the boilerplate exceptions that, that you read out on the last application, Mr. Chairman. And then, because your staff has recommended approval of this application, we think it's entirely appropriate for you to do so as well. Mr. Chapman started his custom home building business in nineteen ninety-eight and began primarily by doing custom homes in the Atlanta, Buckhead, Alpharetta area, and also Highlands, North Carolina. He evolved into doing a senior ranch-style housing and became well-known and very proficient in that respect. And now it's, it's clear that his design and architectural flair has, has gone towards the, the type of traditional homes that you see here, the four-sided architecture and the high price points. And again, Mr. Chapman is extremely adept in that. And if you don't believe me, ask one of his staff members that is here. So I'm sure she would like to keep her job. She would say that. That being said, for all these reasons, we do respectfully request that you recommend to the board of commissioners that the application be approved as we presented it to you today, and that you follow your staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Garvis went over just a little bit, not too bad. So we'll add that additional time to the opposition. Let's hear from the opposition now, please.
Good morning. Mary Rose Barnes, Oakdale Community Association. The applicant of this development addressed one of our major concerns. When he moved the entrance further away, further away from Atlanta Road, the new entrance location plus the taper will make traffic flow much better, excuse me, much safer. Accommodations involving site distance, of course, can be resolved in plan review, as Mr. Sam said. While the applicant plans to sot only the front yards, we believe that development in this caliber and price range should have yards that are fully soted. That does not mean that we want to, would want to prohibit fireplaces, outdoor kitchens, whatever they wanted to do that would be within the code, but that the, the actual grass would be sod. We also had, we had requested of, of, of Mr. Sams that he eliminate any Sunday warding. That was, so we believe that fourteen D should be eliminated from the stipulation letter, and that would take care of that issue. In addition, particularly since the, the comments and the recommendation from this morning about Z-6, we would ask that October to March hours be seven to five, April, December to be seven to seven, and nine to five on Saturdays. That was a recommendation this morning, as I said. The stormwater recommendations should be private. However, the, the stipulation letter does not reference private detention or that the HOA would be responsible for and have an escrow account for saying. Without acknowledgement of HOA responsibility, the private detention or any vehicle or escrow, it might be a problem. And my comments with my talk with Mr. Braden this morning, he assured me this will be taken care of in, in site plan review. But we would like it to be handled upfront to satisfy the concerns of our neighbors that it would be done. The area is a floodplain, and it's extremely important this be done correctly. In addition, since purchasers in this subdivision might not be aware of their financial responsibility, as I said, they should be specifically apprised of the fact that it will be, in writing, that it would be private detention. This, of course, will increase their monthly HOA fees. So they should be apprised of that ahead of time. And also in conversations with neighbors this morning, they have asked that there be a naturally buffered, maintained, naturally maintained buffer to the rear of the lots. And with these stipulations, we believe the development can be a welcome addition to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Do we have another speaker for Z-22? Z-22, last call. Okay. It'll be back to this body then. This is also in District Two, so I'll handle this discussion. Again, I have heard from quite a few of you folks that commented on Z-6. The same people are concerned about this, the reason being it's in the same neighborhood. The smaller one on Lee Road, 1.8 acres, is about a block, block and a half away from this site. There's a big difference between the two, though, several big differences. About a third of this site is already zoned RA-5. Number two, it's a much larger site, about two to two and a half times larger than the site on Lee Road. And, and it lays much better. It's a gently, it's a gentle rolling hill-type lot that lends itself to, to better development. And just the position of everything on this site tells me that a higher-density development is going to fit here much better than it would on the Lee Road. However, that doesn't mean that we don't have some issues. We do. Three in particular that I identified. One is the privacy and screening issue to those houses on Lee Road that back up to this. I've had a number of those folks express to me concerns about that. So we have some stormwater issues that we'll need to discuss and consider. And we have lot alignment. The lots on the back of this property, this plan for Z-22, don't align well at all with the lots that exist on Lee Road. But I think all of this can be pretty easily handled. The Lee Road folks have said they'd like to have a privacy fence. I took that request to Mr. Sams. He asked his applicant, and they said they'd be glad to do that. So we're going to put that in the letter, in the stipulation letter as a, as a change, that a good pressure-treated, at least six-foot-tall, solid wooden privacy fence be extended down the back of that lot line. I think that'll make all of those neighbors, of which there are six or seven, I've forgotten exactly, that'll make them happy. The stormwater issue, though, comes into play when you're talking about this fence. There is stormwater runoff that, that comes from Atlanta Road. It comes from the small strip mall that's on Atlanta Road, very near Lee, Lee Road. It comes off the parking lot of those strip malls there, and it flows across the back of the first three lots on Lee Road. of the first three lots on Lee Road through a natural ditch that exists there, and then it dumps down into this Z22 parcel. In a very heavy rain event, the water does not flow quickly like it should, and it backs up and it ponds in the back of those first three and sometimes even first four properties on Lee Road. So when we put a fence in, we cannot stop up that natural swell, that natural ditch that is there. We still can put the fence in, but that water will have to go underneath that fence, and I've explained that to a couple of the neighbors, and they understand that. Now, the problem with the ponding and the puddling of that into these backyards is caused by the fact that the water does not flow very well across this lot, this zoning request, Z22 site. They're going to make some changes and corrections that will help move that water through. It'll be put underground. The underground piping will be between two of the lots there, and it'll take it away in a much more efficient manner, and hopefully this is going to help and maybe even correct a situation that's existed for a long, long time there. Understanding that the water we're talking about is not created on this site, it comes from off-site, but it does flow across this site, and they have agreed that they're going to take care of that so that hopefully we won't have that ponding up in the backyards there. So all of that can be done, and I think it can be facilitated and much easier done if we align the lots a little better. That necessitates removing at least one and maybe even two of the lots off the back of this. We have 16 lots requested now. I'm going to recommend we go to 14 and remove those two lots from the back so that we can perfectly, or as close to perfectly, align the lots with the lots that exist on Lee Road. I think that's a reasonable request to make, and I think the developer can still build his RA5 subdivision there and probably do very well. These are going to be very nice homes. I did bother to check on Jim Chapman. He builds a beautiful house. He's a quality builder. I think we'll all be happy once this is in, and I think if we solve these few privacy screening, stormwater, and lot alignment issues, I think we can move forward with a nice subdivision. Any questions or concerns from you guys? Judy?
I have a question about the fence and the buffer between residential and residential. And I also have a question, why are we removing two lots?
I think we ought to remove it, I'm sorry.
I think we would have to remove at least one. If you don't, when, if you look at the plan that's on the screen right now, you see where it's going to come in between lots. It's hard to read that. Is it nine and 10?
No, I can't read that.
You're not, you're going to have a real hard time putting houses there once you put that underneath, under the ground there, because they can't build over that.
But...
And it will just make it much easier if we align those lots and take out at least one lot there.
I would say C taking one, but maybe not two. I think it would work, we'd just remove one.
Okay.
It may help get rid of variances there, too.
Well, it would. I didn't mention that, but it would, I think it would eliminate any variances, frankly, if we did that, which is another plus. Some of these lots are already quite large. If you look at the side on the right there, which is already zoned RA5, look how much bigger they are than the ones across the Lee Road site.
And the other thing I can't read is, Garvis, what is the rear setback on those lots that we're talking about that line up to the Lee Road lots?
Forty feet. Forty feet.
So we're 40 feet, they're already a 40-foot setback.
Yeah, they, yes, ma'am, there is. We have our engineer here. As far as aligning the lots, I see what you're saying, but that's not going to have any effect upon the stormwater management plans that our engineer has and has worked in cooperation with Stormwater Management Division, nor, from a land use planning perspective, does it really enhance the positioning of their lots and/or our lots. To have them cookie cutters stylistically lined up like soldiers is not a principle that's typically followed in home...
They won't line up exactly, but they'll be a lot better than what we see here. You'll just have room to negotiate that you don't now have.
Losing two lots does, when you approved in 2014, 22 lots at four units per acre, it doesn't balance, and I'm afraid it kills the deal. I know economics is not your concern, but I'm telling you, stormwater is not going to be affected by whether two lots are removed or not, not the way we have worked on this.
Anybody else?
I think one is fair.
Okay. Skip?
Skip.
Yeah, I'm hearing all this about removing one or two lots. I'm still confused about how that addresses the flow of that stormwater management pipe that's buried there.
Well, it is going to be underground, and if you put that underground, there's an area on top of that, 10 feet either side, that you can't build on.
Right, I understand that.
And so if you remove at least a lot, it allows room for them to position the houses so that that's not an issue.
But it's not an issue right now, the way it's drawn, or the...
It will be an issue. So you can't tell where the houses are now.
The houses are probably about 40 feet wide, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you have a 50-foot lot and a 40-foot house, that's only five feet in between, and I think that drain adjustment...
These are 65 foot.
They are 65? I can't, I can't hardly read it. Is that what it says on the plan? It's hard to read in our book.
Sorry, engineer, Daryl Cook.
Okay.
Hi, Daryl Cook with Watson Brown Engineering.
Okay, I didn't ask a question. I was wrong about the lot width, but that's what I was trying to get at with that pipe.
So they're 65?
But they're, but they're wider, yeah.
So that would take care of that issue.
And how wide are the homes to be?
The homes are 40, so we've got plenty...
Forty or so.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got, we've got room between the lots. The lot alignment has, would have absolutely no bearing on being able to pick up that stormwater, honestly.
Well, I know that. I'm just, I'm just saying that the neighbors have all told me they wish they would line up instead of looking straight back out my window at two or three houses, they would be looking at maybe one. And so a lot of, we take lot alignment into account many times.
But isn't that why you're putting the fence in?
Yeah, I mean, we're screening, planting, so...
You're still going to see these tall houses.
It's more of a ratio than an alignment.
And it will, it will help with your requirement for any variances that might be needed. It'll help.
There's no variances. We're not seeking variances.
No variances requested.
They're very listed in the book.
Right now, it's a seven to five ratio, if I count it right.
Okay.
Which is not too bad.
But aren't there three contemporaneous variances? That's what I've got.
I think staff thought there were, but we've not, we've not requested any, and we don't believe there are any required.
John, do you know? I thought there were variances.
Those variances were based on the original plan. This plan that's on the board on your monitor has changed.
So it meets all...
So there may not be any variances.
It appears it meets the zoning requirements.
Except for maybe the front setback, are you still requesting that or no?
I think we've met the front setback required by the zoning.
20 right now, Daryl?
Hi.
Is it 25 feet or 20 feet?
I believe it's, I don't remember.
It's right there behind you.
We can't tell because this is so small.
It's labeled as 20. Is it 25 required? I think, I thought 20 was what was required for this.
And 20 is, was required for the interior lot.
Yeah, these are interior lots, so 20 is what we're showing. We have no variances. And that was whole design with this, was to this time have nothing that would be of any, you know, acts beyond...
In the old application, did we require that they align the lots up?
No, ma'am.
Never heard that before.
So why are we asking for it now?
It's not so much, I don't think it's the aligning them. I think we're talking about the number of lots. It's more of a ratio, like Mr. Gunther just said, seven to five, or whatever the number is. I'm not sure you meant that you wanted the lot lines to match up as much as you were...
No, they won't match up. They won't match up. They'll align...
So that's not what, I don't think that's what he was talking about.
Yeah, but that's what you said, aligning it.
Well, they will align, they'll give them the opportunity to align them better, but I'm trying, I'm trying, I want to reduce the ratio, and I want to be sure there's enough room to put that underground piping there so that they don't have any chance of, they can't build on top of it. And as it is now, they're going to be really close to that.
We can rearrange so that the, we can actually revise the plan, I'm told by Mr. Cook, so that the ratio comes down to six to five instead of seven to five, and swap some lots around, much the same as we did from the first plan to this plan.
But see, leaving it at 16?
Yes, sir.
And you can do that?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm good with that then.
And that's a good solution.
Okay, okay. So we'll make that a condition. Okay, anybody else?
No, I think that sounds...
I like that.
I might have a lot.
Dave, do you need to straighten us out on anything?
He fixed it.
He fixed it, okay. Stormwater is still a concern. I want to be sure that we understand what we're trying to do here, and that's move the water through this property as efficiently as we can, so there's no more ponding in the back of these yards on Lee. We're going to give them the fence, right?
Yes, sir.
We're not going to stop up the ditch that's existing there now.
Mr. Braden will see that we don't.
Catch the stormwater, move it quickly, so we hopefully will have some positive impact on that ponding situation.
It'll be a definite improvement, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm good to go. Anybody else? Okay, I make a motion then that we approve Z22. We're going to leave the numbers as they are then, which is 16 homes for RA5 zoning. Subject to all staff comments and recommendations, including stormwater management, fire department, water and sewer, and DOT, the correction for the size of the tract is 4.6 acres. We did have to correct that, so, and subject to the following changes on the stip later, letter dated February the 3rd, on the first page, correct 4.63 to read 4.60, which is the correct acreage. Likewise, on the second page, item number three needs to read 4.60 acres. We can leave the 16 homes as is. On item number five, we talk about the construction materials. Let's also list at the end of number five, no vinyl to be used on the exterior of any home. On number six D, which talks about the stormwater detention area to be fenced, let's say fencing to be black vinyl-coated chain link, a minimum height of five feet, let's do that. And also, Mary Rose suggested we do a little alteration to number seven, and I agree with that. It mentions that the new HOA would be responsible for private streets, fencing, we want to add the detention area to that list as well, landscaping, and the entry signage and lighting. At the end of number seven, that last sentence, needs to read mandatory HOA, I'm sorry, private streets shall be conveyed to the mandatory HOA for all maintenance, and annual HOA assessments shall include funds escrowed for street, comma, utility, comma, and detention maintenance. So that'll take care of that request. Number nine has to do with signage and lighting. At the end of number nine, we should add, "Further, all street lighting must be environmentally sensitive such that it will prevent outward illumination and visible glare onto the adjoining Next page, number 11, I'm sorry, number 10 H. The applicant slash developer agrees to install a pressure-treated, solid wooden privacy fence along the northern property boundary, not later than 120 days after final BOC approval. Fence height to be not less than six feet, and maintenance of said fencing will be the responsibility of the HOA. We're really stating that twice, but that's okay. Number 14 has to do with the work hours, and yes, I'm going to, going to do the same thing there as we did on Z6. 14A will be 7:00 to 5:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. B will be 7:00 to 7:00 p.m. C, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays. D, no work on Sundays. And E has to do with construction parking. At the end of that, we should have a sentence that says, "Thus, no parking will take place on Cooper Lake Drive." And I believe that's it. Have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Again, build us some pretty houses down there now.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Garvis, I'm sorry, I know we've stopped, but let me ask you one quick question.
Yes, sir.
You were told, and I was told, that back at the previous request for 22 homes on this site, that there was concern about contamination of one of the sites because of a fire of a home that burned to the ground. They thought there was asbestos there, they thought it probably contaminated the site. Would you address that?
Certainly. In January 2014, during one of those storm events, snowmageddon one or two, whichever one it was, the house behind the Monique Muffler shop burned to the ground, and of course the blaze was put out by the Cobb County Fire Department. Patrick Malloy, we went through the rezoning in the summer of 2014, had that looked at by environmental engineers preliminarily. They didn't reduce it to a report, but the site, the site is clean in terms of any surface asbestos, any type of lead-based paint component, so, and plus, before this site is developed and before Mr. Chapman closes on it, he'll require, and the bank will require, there be a Phase 1 environmental study completed on it as well.
I had three, as you know, I had three neighbors contact me and said they just wanted to be sure when the site was disturbed, they weren't stirring up asbestos into the air and...
That was the house of a man who trimmed trees known by the name of Monkey Man.
Let the record reflect that, okay?
Just part of my job.
Okay. We'll put that in the record. Thank you, Garvis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. It's exactly 12 noon. We're going to take a lunch break now, so we'll be back in one hour at 1 o'clock to resume and hopefully wrap everything up. Thank you very much, folks. Okay, we're back after a nice lunch break. It's not raining yet, so everything is good. John, is Z20 next, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead and call that one then, please.
Resounding case Z20, NNS Automotive Services LLC requests rezoning from GC to LI for the purpose of light auto repair in land lots 422 and 423 of 17th District. The property is located at the southwest intersection of Atlanta Road and Mosley Drive. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z20? Let the record shows no one opposed.
Thank you, John. When are you ready, Mr. Sams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. For the record, Mr. Chairman, my name's Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm Sams, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bally, and I represent the applicant, NNS Automobile Services LLC concerning this application, and I have with me today our engineer, Mr. Mark Lee of Poly Engineering, to answer any questions you have at the appropriate time. This is a, it's an interesting piece of property. I would say it's unique, but it's unique in kind of a different way. It's totally paved, 98% of it's paved, and it's a small piece. As you can see, it's 0.374 acres, located at the southwest intersection of Atlanta Road and Mosley Drive, as you can see here on the GIS or the zoning excerpt map that's being displayed, across from the Dobbins complex or campus. This is in an area on your future land use map that's industrial-compatible by design and as a lot of the properties along the Atlanta Road corridor are. So our application that seeks a rezoning for purposes of light automotive repair, all carried on within the inside or confines of a building is appropriate, we think, in all respects. Originally, this property, of course, was or is zoned in the GC classification. Unfortunately, because of non-use over a period of time, statutorily it lost its grandfather exemption, as you see so many properties do, that are located outside of either a community activity center or a regional activity center, and that's what happened with this, with this piece. So what we've done, we applied to rezonate to light industrial since it was industrial-compatible, but your staff has recommended TS to our services, which is also compatible with industrial-compatible, and that's fine. That allows what we are seeking to do, and so that classification is fine, at least from our perspective, and obviously more so from staff's perspective as well. The, there's no present entitlement to utilize this property since the grandfather exemption has expired, so you're really in a position needing to do something with this property. And of course, my clients have it under contract contingent on it being entitled and rezoned. While this application's been pending, we've spoken, of course, with your staff, had huge interplay with the water system and with the Stormwater Management Department, because you can see, looking at it from sort of the, I guess that'd be the southeastern side of the property, you've got a sewer line that traverses the property, which you have to stay away from, and our original plan showed a zero-foot setback from that. And then you've got a stormwater management piping that goes and traverses the property as well, which actually needs to be deeper according to your Stormwater Management Division because of, it's just insufficient piping to handle a good bit of the basin which goes through this property and continues on in the direction you see as indicated by the easement. So even though there might have been a workaround with respect to the stormwater management and the sewer issues, we'd have had to relocate those at great expense and really a great consternation to probably both Mr. Davidson and Mr. Braden. So we have moved the building from where it was to where you see it located now on Atlanta Road. We have also spoken, not only with your staff, but with the city, Smyrna staff, this is pretty new, the city of Smyrna. It's not a requirement, but I like to interface with them, just see if they have any particular or issue... or issues particular to the Atlanta Road corridor in this section, and they did not. This will be a rezoning from GC to TS for the utilization of this property for minor or light automotive repair, which is also allowed under your NRC classification, but then that's not compatible with industrial-compatible. So here we are, TS. It'll be in substantial conformity to this revised site plan that you're seeing right now. The architectural style of the building, we are in flux on that because we're not sure what the orientation of the building is gonna be, particularly after Mr. Porter and I have had some recent conversations on relocating it on the site. So, the way it stands now, we're just asking that the architectural style and composition be left up to the district commissioner. That way, then she can have some assurances that it's done the way that she envisions the corridor and needs to progress to this section of the Atlanta Road corridor. The hours of operation will be from 7:00 AM until 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturdays, closed on Sundays. Only three employees on the site. We did have just a passel, I like that word, my granddaddy used that word, passel of variances, but that passel is down to much less than that now. We are, of course, asking for a waiver of the LI district because we don't have the square footage under LI, and we're at 16,291. We're asking right now for a waiver on the side setback, and then a waiver on impervious surface. There's 98% impervious surface on the site now. So we are asking that it be, that variance be granted as well. Stormwater management is not requiring any additional stormwater on the site. I've already told you how stormwater flows under the property and thus through it. Any sheet flow on the property is, can be handled as is, unless we're doing something over 5,000 square feet, which we're not. The building actually has been reduced in size to 1,275 from its original size. DOT is asking for right-of-way on Mosley, 25 feet from the center line. We'll do that. The driveway you see, we're gonna have to move it further south on Mosley, it'll be at least 100 feet away from that intersection. And we need to, of course, stripe and fix the parking once the building is configured and positioned in the appropriate place on the site. The signage that will be on Mosley and maybe on Atlanta Road will comply in all respects with the sign on it, it's ground-based monument style. Again, something that will be reviewed and approved by your district commissioner. Compliance with all the fire department regulations. Any minor modifications, we'd ask that it come back to the district commissioner. And again, we have the boilerplate language that y'all have adopted in that. For all these reasons, we do request that you approve the application, following your staff's recommendation for approval. Additionally, we've had no opposition to this application, and we've, of course, sent out the letters, had the signs on the property, made the phone calls. Smyrna has heard nothing as well, neither has our staff. So we would think, some tweaking that I know Mr. Porter has in mind, we would think this might be a candidate for your consent agenda, assuming we can meet the tweaks and revise the plan in accordance with some vision that he has for it. So, Mr. Chairman, that's our case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. And for the record, again, anyone here opposed to or wish to speak to Z-20? Okay, not seeing and hearing any. It's back to this board. This is, Mr. Porter, this is yours. So lead our discussion, please.
Okay, thank you. As Garvis said, this is a very difficult parcel because of all the easements running right smack through it and it being such a small parcel. You know, when you look at LI, I think that would be too intense, so I think the staff's right in their recommendation of TS. With LI, they were asking for a variance from a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet to 16,000-something. With TS, you're doing a variance from 20,000 square feet to 16-something. So it's a lot more in line and a lot more with intensity that would be appropriate on this kind of lot. The original plan that we had, had the building all the way at the back of the lot, but because of all those easements there, it just can't be placed there without relocating a lot of things. So they re-propos, they proposed pulling the building all the way up here, but when I went to the community meetings that Commissioner Cooper and I hold, they had real issues with bringing this building so close to the road. And also the variance on the side setback as well, potentially having a negative impact on the lot next door. And as I got to looking at this, I realized this building can be positioned in the center of this parcel, you know, to the Atlanta Road side of all those easements, but still, you know, well within the area. I think it would fit within a 40-foot setback, which, and for TS, it calls for a 40 or 50-foot setback from the road, and I think that's dependent on whether this is a collector and that. So what would be the proper setback on this, John? Okay, so this would be 50, so I think we'd have to give them a variance down to 40 feet, which I think's a lot more reasonable than a variance down to eight feet on that. So, with that said, I'm gonna try and use a lot of language to give some direction and, I think, ask that they redraw the plan before the board of commissioners. I think we can move this forward here without making it come back through us. And also, you know, make some, you know, minor changes to the STIP letter that are more reflective of changing from LI to TS, and knocking out some of the variances that the STIP letter had asked for that won't apply anymore. And I think they'll be able to, you know, kind of wrap this up. So, does anybody have any questions on that before I make a motion?
Just a chance to chip that one wrong here, except that we know what you're talking about.
Okay. Throw this on the screen? And this drawing's not exactly to scale, but it's roughly to scale, let me put it that way. You'll see my great artwork here. Just a quick sketch, and I think that's a good idea. Thank you, Judy, for recommending that. You can see the building will fit somewhat in the center, within the 25-foot setback, about 40 feet off there. Relocating the driveway further south on Mosley, which was a DOT recommendation, and eliminating the driveway on Atlanta Road, because they really have no place to put a D cell lane in here. And also, DOT had asked for it to be 100 feet away from the intersection, and they don't have enough frontage to move it 100 feet away from the intersection. So, it doesn't make sense to have one on Atlanta Road, to me. That allows us to put in a landscape enhancement strip of about eight feet, basically all the way around. And this bottom hatched area would be a landscape buffer. And why it looks so funny is because we don't want to get into the easements and start planting a buffer in the middle on top of the sewer easements and that. So it's a smaller-than-normal buffer back to the apartments that are behind it. And I have that sitting five feet outside of the 10-foot setback, just that way if they dig to the 10-foot setback, it will disturb less roots of the trees. So I didn't want them planting trees all the way to the edge. Does anybody have any questions about the drawing before I?
Tim Davidson reminded me at the end of our first session that you can plant above an easement, but not trees.
Right.
You know, you can put rosebushes or azaleas or something like that, understanding that if you need to excavate it, you may lose them.
Right.
But trees, no.
Yeah, and that's why I've kept the trees out of it, and that's why that's a weird triangle hatched area down there. Exactly. I talked to Tim yesterday about that, so that we didn't, originally I had it planned with a complete buffer. But luckily, the apartment buildings are more where the buffer's thicker anyway, so I think that will be good. Right. Any other comments before I make a motion?
Yeah, I guess the question is, if you want to put that landscaping in there, I'm not sure to what end.
What's that?
I'm not sure why you want to put the landscaping in there on that.
The buffer or the?
The landscaping buffer, yeah. So that there's some shielding to that apartment complex that's just next to it.
Right, exactly. We normally try and buffer to residential. In fact, next month, we'll have a comp plan amendment that will talk about buffering to residential uses along this stretch.
Where's your residential at?
Right behind this side. Just the CRC.
The CRC, it's under the CRC.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The CRC is the residential.
Yeah. I think I remember the CRC.
If this?
Pretty old place, I think.
Yeah, it's not in good shape.
I'm just not sure what we accomplished by the, the buffer between it and the apartments. I'm not sure what that's.
Just to try and?
I see it along the street there, but not behind it.
Just to try and buffer those apartments that the parking lot runs right up to this. Try and give both apartments some shed of view as well as a little bit of noise, you know, shed as well. The other problem we really have with this parcel is, right now, it's at 98%. I really think we need to get that down as well.
That was my question. This is 98% impervious covered. You mean paved?
Paved right now. I want to bring that down.
So you're gonna have to remove the paving to plant this.
Right, yeah. Yeah. And also to put in the eight-foot landscape strip.
I see doing the streets. I really do. I think you've been consistent on doing the streets when we've been in commercial. I just have a problem, well, I haven't heard your motion, though.
Okay, but it will include that, and that's something that, you know, right now, next month, we'll hear a comp plan change to address buffering between any of these uses and any residential properties on this whole strip. So this parcel will actually be part of that comp plan change that we'll hear next month. Not saying that we've approved it yet or anything, but, you know, and it speaks to buffering between any residential use, and it's there primarily for the apartment complexes that are along there.
And how much of a buffer were you thinking of next to that apartments? Because?
This area, I really would like to have bigger, but this site doesn't allow much more than this. I think that's about probably 30 or 40 feet at its widest point, and then you can see it just tapers down to nothing once you get over to Mosley.
Uh huh.
So, and it gives a little bit of pervious surface to that lot as well. That's about 137, I think it was, wide, or no, 125 wide. Yeah, 130-something on Mosley frontage.
Who were those condos built? Does anybody know? John?
The apartments.
The apartments condos.
They're old.
Yeah, they're at least 30, 40 years old.
Those apartments are really old, and if my memory serves me correct, I think the board of commissioners zoned that CRC in '98.
Yeah, they did.
They zoned a bunch of different properties on Atlanta Road to different categories, and we got sued on some, we lost some. This is one that actually stuck, the CRC.
Oh, okay. So it was built in the 90s then?
It was zoned in the 90s, it was built way before then.
It was even built before then.
It's like 50s or 60s.
So it was probably the REM classification?
Probably so.
And the state of repair of that building is not real great either, when you just look at it.
So, I'm not sure. I'm still back to my buffer thing.
Right. Yeah, I think if nothing else, it provides a little bit more green on the parcel rather than being at 98%, which is pretty extreme. I know it's at 98% now, but we are redeveloping, so I don't think that means we have to stay at 98%.
I think I see Gaunt's point, because really, even if those apartments go away tomorrow, something else will go there that's residential in nature, and you would want to have some buffering. So I think I'd support that.
Okay.
Well, I'm not fighting the buffer, but it's CRC in an industrial-compatible area, so I doubt seriously it's ever gonna be developed residential, oh, redeveloped residential.
Probably not. Yeah, but it's all an industrial-compatible area.
I don't think you have to worry about a big old house behind it.
So, ready for a motion?
Chief Gaff.
Okay. I make the following motion regarding Z-20 to recommend deletion to TS, subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. All stipulations in the letter from Garvis L. Sams Jr. dated February 2nd, 2013, and February 18th, 2016, not otherwise in conflict with the following changes. And all these changes are on the letter of February 2nd. Paragraph 2, change LI to TS. Delete paragraph 3, which, paragraph 3 deals with conforming to the original site plan. So that doesn't make any more, doesn't make sense anymore. Paragraph 4, change 2241 square feet to 1,125 square feet, which is the size on the most recent site plan for the building. Paragraph 7A, change LI to TS, and 40,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. Paragraph 7B, delete which had the variance for a side setback that shouldn't be needed. Paragraph 7C, delete which had a rear setback variance, which shouldn't be needed anymore. Paragraph 7D, I'm just gonna ask them to recalculate the maximum impervious after putting in these buffers and landscaping, so it won't be 98% anymore. And delete paragraph 7E, which asks for a variance of the sewer easement. And also, prior to the board of commissioners, ask that they revise the site plan to comply as close as possible with the following. Reposition the building to the central point of the lot such that the front setback is at least 40 feet, and the major side setback of at least 25 feet. And the rear of the building is on the Atlanta Road side of the sanitary sewer line, 10-foot The Atlanta Road driveway is eliminated. The Mosley driveway is relocated to DOT recommendations. Eight-foot landscape enhancement strip along Atlanta Road and Mosley. Eight-foot grass and/or landscape strip along the southeastern property line with striped parking adjacent, except for where the landscape buffer is installed. An F, a triangular-shaped landscape buffer along the southwest property line to five feet outside the sanitary sewer setback. Next stipulation, building exterior to be four-sided brick or other masonry materials is approved by the district commissioner. District commissioner to approve final architecture and colors. And landscape plan to be approved by the county landscape architect. And I guess, trying to decide if we should ask that to go on the consent agenda, if we get all these done, or is that too many changes, they should hear it? What's the opinion?
They agreed to all the changes.
Yeah, they might not agree to all of them, so, okay, let's not put it on consent. Just leave it like that. So that's my motion.
I wouldn't put it on consent if it were me. It's just too complicated, yeah. Okay. All right, we have a motion? We have a second? Our second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? All opposed? Okay, we got it. Thank you, Mr. Sams. Thank you, Mr. Sams. Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir. Resonating case Z-23, Paulding Construction Solutions, request rezoning from R-30 to R-7 for the purpose of senior residential development in land lot 120 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Marshall Road, south of Marshall Church Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resonating case Z-23? Let the record shows no one opposed.
This has been the Garvis Sam Show today, hasn't it?
Certainly the firm show, Mr. Scherz. James and Park.
I want to know what John Moore's doing here. I mean, he doesn't seem to have anything going on.
We hired him.
When have you ready, Mr. Sams?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, um...
Again, good afternoon, members of the planning commission. Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name's Garvis Sams with the law firm of Sams, Lark and Huff and Bowling. And I represent Paulding Construction Solutions concerning this application for rezoning. And I have with me today Mr. Mike McMahon of, I'll call it PCS, Paulding Construction Solutions. Also have two representatives from the Aviary subdivision with us today, one of whom is the vice president of the homeowners association. If you look at your, the map that's being shown now, the GIS map, you can see the aviary is a very fine subdivision that's contiguous and to the, immediately to the west of this property. And I'd like to reserve a little time to have the VP say a few things, if that's appropriate. Also, I've got a letter, actually it's a petition with some signatures from not only people within the aviary, but also people that are located on Mars Hill Road directly across from the subject property. So I'll just tender that to Dave, and he can pass it on to the clerk. This property, it's got a little interesting history to it. It's a seven-point-nine-two acre tract. It's actually an assemblage of two tracts, and you can see where it's positioned on the west side of Mars Hill Road, south of Mars Hill Road's intersection, where you see Mars Hill Church Road come in there, and you see the old configuration as opposed to the new configuration as well. And what you're looking at, just north of where that intersection is, is actually a development that Mr. McMahon has done. That's what he's trying to replicate. This is the exact same type of development on that side that happens to be in the city of Acworth that he planned for this side as well, which is an independent RSL. By the way, the one in Acworth is called Stonehaven Villas. It's a very successful, a very successful community. In fact, Mr. McMahon lives there himself, and I know they're right now going through the process of turning over the control of the subdivision to the HOA, and it's kind of a laborious process, but they're going through that. That's the stage of maturity that that subdivision is in. And it also is age-restricted, RSL, restricted to fifty-five years of age and older. While this application's been pending, we've established a dialogue with area residents, with members of the aviary. I'll have to give Mr. McMahon credit for that. He's the one that has spearheaded that. Actually, one of the owners of a portion of this property actually lives in the aviary, and he is here as well today. So it's been important to us to have neighbors that are not only responsive, but interactive and willing. I told them to be here this morning, and so they very patiently have sat here and unfortunately had to listen to me, but now maybe they'll listen to me and like it a little better. But the point is, they're very supportive of this, and we're appreciative for that. We've also established a dialogue with the county's professional staff, and that staff dialogue has been constrained somewhat because of the dictates of the future land use map, which puts this in RR, rural residential. And when you look at development in RR, you look at it like the aviary, or you look at it in sort of a density-neutral situation like an RSL. Now, this is less density-neutral than, say, a supportive RSL like the one James Bowling, one of my partners, did this morning, because obviously people fifty-five years of age and older, we do drive, but not necessarily hitting the AMP and peak hours as you would expect if it were just an R-20 or an R-30 subdivision. So in addition to all those, we have put together a letter of agreeable stipulations that's dated February the eighth, when we submitted it. For this side, this is a rezoning from R-30 to RSL specifically for an age-restricted ranch-style villa development, twenty-eight units as opposed to the forty-eight unit or more development that's right up the street in the city of Acworth. Stonehaven Villas, that's already built, just like this, has ten-foot ceilings, elegant trim packages typically only found in the kind of homes like Jim Chapman, who I was up here for a little bit ago, built. Custom-type homes. Mr. McMahon, he said when he lived, he told me he lived there, and he said, "But mine's six thousand square feet." And so I guess he's put two of them together, but he likes it enough to live there, and I don't know if any of our purchasers are going to have that big of a pad, but in any event. It's an elegant look. You've seen the pictures and the photographs that have been handed out, and he's very proud of what he's done in the city of Acworth, and I think you'll be very proud of what he does here. The property will be developed in substantial conformity to this site plan, and this site plan you're seeing was done after your work session. And your work session, I think the fire department took issue with respect to some configurations of the interior streets, and Mark Lee, our engineer with Paulding Engineering, is here today, and I think that I'll let he and Rock Toller from the fire department grapple about this, but my understanding from Mark Lee that this now comports with what Mr. Toller and the fire department were looking at. So we have made that change, and it's reflected on the site plan you're seeing. This is going to be twenty-eight non-supportive, active adult, age-restricted residential homes. It's three-point-five-four units per acre. Total site area is seven-point-nine-two. We've got forty-one percent of it's an impervious. We're allowed to have a maximum, I think, of fifty-five percent. So we're under the percentage of impervious surface. Size of homes are going to be from three thousand square feet, and a little bit greater, but most of them are going to be right around three thousand square feet. Price points on these, three-hundred-and-twenty's, three-thirties, up to the four-hundreds and beyond. If you combine two of them, who knows? But the point is, they're very nicely done, very well-appointed, and of course, at a minimum, each has an attached two-car garage, and there's a place for storage, parking of vehicles in each one of the driveway. Architectural style, I would call it European, four-sided European with stone and brick components, consistent with the photographs. There is a mandatory HOA. He's got it in Stonehaven Villas, and he'll have it here as well. And that's important because that's for the upkeep, fencing, maintenance, open space areas, entrance to the community, and the other components that you might suspect. Paulding Construction Solutions will agree in the future. There'll be no more than ten percent of these homes that'll be rental at any one time. Not as intent, as far as I know, none in Stonehaven Villas are rented out, but that's typically the threshold or the standard point in terms of rental, and if you've got that in a stipulation, I'm assuming it's enforceable by the zoning division. However, if it's not, if you need for us to, or Mr. Peterson and his staff require it, we can also include that as a recital in the protective covenants governed by the HOA. Subdivision entrance signs will be ground-based monument-style there on Mars Hill Road. We'll have a twenty-foot landscape buffer around the perimeter of the property, and of course submit a landscape plan along with that. When I say around the perimeter, I mean around the perimeter, but I don't mean along the road frontage itself. Of course, there'll be Leland Cypress's around the detention area you see in the northwestern corner of the property. I say Leland Cypress, it'll be Borovide, Leland Cypress, or a Cryptomere, something like that. I think your arborist is kind of moving away from the Leland Cypress, but something of an evergreen nature to screen that detention area. And to beat you to the punch, we'll agree to put a fence no less than five feet in height, black vinyl coated chain-link fence around the detention area as well. The Concanet Water System has asked that we master meter this site, which we'll do. They'd like a separate sub-meter for each home, which we'll do, which tracks the individual usage. We're working with Mr. Davidson in the water system now in terms of sewer. We'll be placing a pump or lift station on the lowest point of the property, lifting it to the sewer that's, I think it's accessible. I may misspeak, and Mark Lee, our engineer, can correct me, but I think it's behind the shopping center that's just north of the site that fronts on both Mars Hill and Highway forty-one. Mr. Davidson brought up a point to me, this is more of a plan review issue, but just so you'll know, we may carve out the little track for the lift station for purposes of having and keeping it in a corporate entity's name as opposed to an HOA having responsibility, simply because you've got long-term maintenance agreements with any type of lift station. But again, that's something that'll be worked out during plan review. We've agreed to stormwater management's comments and recommendations. The detention pond will be discharging towards the aviary, but it follows the stream bank and the buffer and tree drainage areas on the north side of the, when you can see the stream that kind of irregularly snakes back on the north side of our property. It does some very similar type of contours on the aviary property as well. Of course, in addition to that, we've got seventy-five-foot stream bank buffers, and we'll convey those to the county in the form of restrictive easement, so that they'll remain undeveloped in perpetuity. DOT is asking for a curb gutter and sidewalk on Mars Hill, deceleration lane and taper to the extent we can do a decel. There's already a portion of a decel lane on there. Mr. Chairman, I just got to wrap it, one more, couple more, one more minute. Voluntary donation conveyance on Mars Hill, fifty feet from center line, site distance of five hundred feet in both directions. The streets will be built to the county's design and detailed specs, but they'll be private, so we'll have the guest parking at point-five units per, point-five spaces per unit, and the constructions of sidewalks on at least one side of every street within the community. We've got the hours of construction operation as outlined in the stip letter, and we also have agreed to Georgia native plant rescue for the site within fifteen-day period after notice to Paulding Construction Solutions. We've got the usual language about the district commissioner making minor modifications. So, that being said, I realize where your staff is. I think it's a soft position where they are. Don't want to put words in John's mouth, but I think it's a soft position, and I think because of the proximity of this to Stonehaven Villas and the appropriateness of that and the absolute need. I saw something on a blog where in West Cobb, you know, why do we have so many of RSLs, supportive and non-support? Well, the simple answer is, all the baby boomers are getting older, and there is a need for them. It wouldn't be built if there wasn't an age-restricted need. So, that being said, we do respectfully request that you approve this application as submitted to you today, and at the appropriate time, I ran out of time. Appropriate time, we've got people from the aviary here that would probably like to say a word or two, if you want to stretch it.
You used all their time.
I know it.
You invite them here, and then you use all their time.
I know it, but my partner, James Bowley, had thirty-eight seconds left, I know, on the first one.
We would like to hear from those folks, though, so if you have something to say, come on up related to Z-23, and just do it as quickly as you can. We would like to hear from you.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that.
That's okay. Have you been sworn in? Okay. Just give us your name, please.
Okay, my name's David Adams. I do live in the aviary. Been there since about 2008, and I come to you today in support of this facility or this development. Wish you'd have been here a little sooner. My parents passed away here recently, and we looked at the other one across the street. At that point in time, there was nothing available, but talking to Mike. Mike, he came here real early to us, and he communicated with us. We sent a letter out to all of our neighbors and got back no response, other than a few positive responses. So I haven't heard anybody that would be against this development. Look at it as being very positive compared to what's out there right now. In comparison to one house that we have located there, this would be a pleasant surprise for us. We would like to have this. As a, can't speak for the homeowners association itself, but the other board members were in favor of it also.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Yeah, come on up just very quickly. Give us your name.
Ted Lauer, and I'm here to offer just overwhelming support from two aspects. First of all, not only homeowner of the aviary subdivision, we see it as a win-win situation. The adult living community makes great neighbors, high-end homes that Mike builds, they're good-looking, the adult community, or they're quiet. And the other aspect is, I'm also trustee and elder of Mars Hill Presbyterian Church, about three lots up the road, and we'd love to have an adult living community. Of course, it gives us opportunity to evangelize and minister to their spiritual needs as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, we'll close the public speaking portion of this. It'll be back to this body, District One. This will be Skip, and he'll handle our discussion.
I guess what I'm impressed about is there has been zero opposition to this right from the very beginning, continuing through today. In fact, we heard the positive comments in support of it. Staff has recommended denial because of the future land use, rural residential designation primarily, but when you drive down Mars Hill Road coming from US forty-one, and you pass the Stonehaven Villas RSL that was talked about, that Mike McManon, I guess, lives in, and also built some years ago, when you pass that, and then just off to its left is Rose Harbor, another RSL, both of which are in the about four-point-three units per acre density. When you pass them, and then you continue on down Mars Hill, what you're struck by is an RSL, another RSL would fit right into this spot very nicely, I think. There's a, there are some shrubs there right now, and some paving with a, looks like a bunch of dumpsters, or some kind of dumping units of some sort being stored there. I'm not sure what that's all about, but this will definitely improve that. When I think about the density of this, one of the things that we've been trying to do in West Cobb is bring, well, let me back up. As West Cobb gets developed more and more and more, a common cry that I hear from residents is, it all comes down to the single word intensity. Things are getting more and more intense, and we want to restrict that. On the flip side of that, property owners, obviously, as we all know, have the right to sell their property for as much as they can get for it, for a use that's approved within the zoning ordinances. So there's this balance that has to be obtained. Property right now is owned R-30. If it stayed at R-30 and were developed as such, that would put in the vicinity of ten homes in there. If it were rezoned R-20, which is a reasonable possibility, it would put in the vicinity of fourteen homes or thereabouts in there. When I look at the traffic that a non-supported RSL will generate, which is about a third, if I understand the numbers right, Jane, can you nod your head and say that's right? Because I believe it is. It's about a third on a daily basis of what a single-family residential unit would generate. You end up with overall less intensity in a, even a twenty-eight-unit RSL on this property. One of the things we've been trying to do as we move towards getting the intensity of our unit, of our developments down in West Cobb, is in the area of RSLs, is to try to restrict further what the density can be in these developments. The ordinance says up to five-point-zero units per acre. We have, in the last year, we've worked real hard to move towards three-point-oh and even below three-point-oh, down to two-point-seven, two-point-eight. My first reaction to this RSL was, it's at three-point-five units per acre, which is less than the two RSLs just adjacent, pretty much adjacent to it, going up towards forty-one. My first reaction was to say, okay, we need to reduce this even further down to maybe about three-point-oh. But I've been thinking about that, and I think that this RSL, it's a proven product. Stonehaven Villas has worked nicely, it appears, at four-point-three, and I think I'm content with a three-point-five unit per acre number. So my feeling is, I don't really have too many changes that I want to make to this. So I'm ready to make a motion, okay? I do have one question, though, before I make the motion. I want to make sure I understand the date that's on the most recent site plan that was submitted this week, this past week. I don't know if it's the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth of February. I know it's in a letter that covers that date of the twenty-fourth of February, but I don't know if that, what the date of that site plan is. Do you know, John? It looks to me like it reads the twenty-third, and I just want to refer to it correctly.
Twenty-third?
Okay, so I'm going to say it's the twenty-third. It's the one that you have on the board now, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of Z-23 with the following conditions: the letter of stipulations received by the zoning department dated February eighth, 2016, and the site plan received by the zoning department dated February twenty-third, 2016. All staff comments and recommendations, and I'd like to follow up on Garvis's offer to modify, I believe it would be stipulation number twelve, having to do with the detention pond, that the applicant will install a black vinyl, not less than five-foot chain-link fence around that pond.
How second, do you think this would be our, for the consideration?
I don't see any reason why not, and I'll further modify that to place this on the B. on the VOC consent agenda. Would that be okay with you, Garvis?
I'm missing out on TV twenty-three time, but I'll get over.
Okay.
So, we have a motion, we have a second discussion. Mr. Toler from the Fire Department, are you, are all of your concerns that you expressed earlier, you're okay? So, everything was satisfied for, as far as the Fire Marshal goes?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good to go. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And thank you very much, Garvis.
I would just add, like to add a comment that for, if this had been further into the area surrounded by US forty-one, Barrett Parkway, Dallas Highway, or really Macklin Road, then I probably would have pushed for a reduction in the, the density. But since it's as close as it is to US forty-one, I think it's fine.
Thank you, sir.
You've been warned.
I have.
And so has, so has John and others.
Okay. Thank you very much. Peterson, what's next?
Yes, sir. Resoning case Z twenty-four, Booze Development Group Incorporated, request resoning from NRC and R twenty to NRC with stipulations for the purpose of retail in land lot twelve-sixty-three of the nineteenth district. The property is located at the intersection of the northwest east side of Brownsville Road and the east east side of Pine Valley Road. The applicant's representative is present. Earlier, there were two people here opposed. All those missing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Well, that's more than two, but that's okay.
I'm good, thank you, man.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry to wake you up, but...
I'm delighted to be woken up. It's a long day when you're sitting watching, you know, so I'm sure it's a long day for you guys. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is John Moore for the record, and I'm here representing Booze Development, and Mr. Eric Flynn is here with the developer, with me, to answer any questions that I can't answer for you. And this is a proposal to rezone from NRC and R twenty to NRC for the purposes of a retail store, a Family Dollar store. And David's putting on the screen, this one needs a little zoning history. It's located basically at the intersection of, of Brownsville Road and Pine Valley Road, and that's the site. If I could point out... This is the site here, and this is Brownsville Road, and this is Pine Valley Road. You see this black line right here. The property located in this small area is the R twenty portion. All of this other is the NRC portion, if everybody understands that, right? This property was rezoned in nineteen ninety-six, and it was originally proposed for retail. It was a total of seven-point-zero-six-four acres at the time. It was rezoned in nineteen ninety-six. Of that, four-point-seven-three-six acres was zoned residential to R twenty, and two-point-three-two-eight acres was zoned NRC for retail and for designated use as a convenience store. After the zoning was completed, the property north of this, the piece directly above, was purchased by a church, and the church was built there instead of the residential, and leaving this site, they, they purchased some of the retail site, too, reducing this site down to two-point-zero-one acres. So, now you have, in order to meet the five-acre requirement for churches, they took some of the retail site as well, leaving this piece, and it's remained undeveloped since that time, but rezoned, but zoned for retail. And I'm going to show you on the original site plan, what I was referring to. This is looking at the same thing. This is Brownsville Road, Pine Valley Road, and this is where it showed the entire retail proposed development back in ninety-six. And what they did is they drew a line across here, and everything this way was zoned residential, and this was zoned retail, and this was the site plan that was attached to the zoning. And... While he's getting around to changing, let me go ahead and do some housekeeping. I have a stipulation letter dated February the twenty-fourth, and I want to make two changes to it, if I could. Paragraph eight on page three, in the second line, it says a minimum of six-foot-high wooden enclosure, and I want to change that to brick-faced enclosure, and then on the, at the end of that line, strike a solid, strike solid wooden, and put in there metal screen gate or door. And then on paragraph sixteen, we want to add to that sentence the following: heavy landscaping to be used around detention pond to visually screen from roadway. Are you ready? Thank you. This is the proposed site plan. Again, this is Brownsville Road, and this is Pine Valley Road. This is a store which will face Brownsville Road, and it is configured so, this is the rear, the, there are no deliveries to the rear of this. You see no access, so it will not have a rear access. It has a door in the back, but it is a fire exit only required by Mr. Toler's group, but it's not a coming and going door, if you understand what I mean. All the deliveries are on the side over here, between this and the church. It is going to be a four-sided brick structure. This is the front portion here, and this is one side, this is the rear, and this is the other side. But very nice developed store, all four side being brick, very attractive building. We also will be submitting a landscape plan at plan review to be approved by the arborist. We had no opposition to this until yesterday, that I knew about. I had contact, I had been contacted by one resident and sent her some information, and sent her a copy of the stip letter, and I never heard anything, and then I got a call yesterday. And the tenor, they can speak for themselves, they're here, but what I've been told is that they understand it's zoned NRC, and they understand that that's what the land use calls for. They just want to leave it the way it is, as opposed to putting something which is not residential on this piece. And I understand that, I really do, but your staff has recommended approval of this as meeting the land use plan, and further say that this is a much less intense use than what it is currently zoned for. It's not a twenty-four-hour-a-day operation. You don't have gas pumps and all the other things that go along with that. So, while I understand their concerns, I think that the appropriate vehicle to handle this is to follow the land use plan and the current zoning, lacking only that little piece of R twenty. And we think this would be a much better for the community than what it's zoned for today. And as I say, Mr. Flynn and I are here to answer any questions that you might have concerning this proposal, should you have any, once the opposition has spoken, and we would follow the dictates of our stipulation letter as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's hear from the opposition now. Anyone wishing to speak, come on up. Thank you for your patience. I know it's been a long day.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, give us your name.
Thank you. My name is Leah Floyd, and I live in the Miller's Pond Creek community. I just moved there probably about a year ago. I love the community as it is. I just think my concerns with this new property would be, would bring traffic congestion to the area. There are only two roads there, one moving, one moving for, back and forth. I could see a lot of traffic being there in that area due to just people going to work, and when school starts, the buses will be there. All of that stuff will cause congestion. I see kids from our neighborhood area, possibly this could danger them running across the street. There are no sidewalks there, no, just no walking area there for that building to go there. The lighting, I stay right behind it. I would see the lights, whether they're dim or not. I do have very large evergreen trees that protect some of the lighting, but two storms have come through, two of those trees have gone down. So, now I can see the gas station, which is, I can't do anything about that, it's already there. Once again, I moved there for the privacy. I didn't, I expected no traffic to be there in that area, moving there a year ago. There's a Kroger right down the street that, that potential business meets all of our needs as far as whatever it is we need. There's just, I just don't see any, any gains from this Family Dollar, no nutritional value whatsoever, other than toilet paper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers? Z twenty-four, come on up. Give us your name.
Sabrina Williams.
Thank you.
And I live in the Miller Creek Pond off of Pine Valley, and probably at least three times a week, it's a near-mish wreck from people coming out of the burnt hickory, crossing over Brownsville, because there's like a dead-end hill. You come over that hill, and people turning off of Brownsville and Pine Valley. If they're coming fast, you know, it's a wreck, and when they, a couple of years, maybe last year, at least once a year, they have a really bad wreck at that intersection, and it's bad, because when you come in Brownsville, people are trying to turn left on burnt hickory, and that, there's a blind spot. You can't see around the people in that turning lane, so people trying to turn left on the Pine Valley. So, you get a head-on right there. So, the traffic is really bad there. And if you see that little spot, there's a gas station on paths, you know, and when traffic is there, like in the afternoon, you know, it's really bad, but of course, it is past that light, but that store is right at that intersection. So, you, you got traffic try, and then they said there's going to be a turn lane off of Brownsville, left into that, that's right where that turn light, that, where that blind spot. So, you got all these people trying, some trying to turn left, some trying to turn left to go on burnt hickory, burnt hickory, some trying to turn left to go into Family Dollar. So, imagine that. And you, like she was saying, you have kids walking to the convenience store up the street, they're jaywalking. So, now, other than the traffic, you've got kids running across the street, people trying to get in the Family Dollar. I just think it's a really, really dangerous intersection, you know, to try to put a Family Dollar there, and, you know, being it's a freestanding store. And like she was saying, two miles, probably two-point-six miles, you got the Krogers. The other way into Paulding County, you got a Food Depot, so that handles all our needs, and then you got the people that want the beer and the gas and the lottery, they can get it at the convenience store. So, I just, mostly it's just a dangerous intersection, you know, with trying to turn there, and then that little area, just put something right there. I would like it just to stay the way it is, you know, even though it's zoned for a convenience store. It's been for sale. I've been living there twelve years, and for some reason, somebody don't want to put a convenience store in it. It might just be because it's a bad traffic area or whatever, but I just don't think a Family Dollar would, you know, I don't shop at Family Dollar. I don't know who else, but, I mean, I don't. I mean, if I need something, I could run up to the Kroger. That's what, five minutes down the road.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z twenty-four? Sure, come on up.
Hello, I'm Pete Herring. I live just around the corner from the proposed site. I could probably hit it with a nine iron. I'm that close to it, so it means a lot to me. My wife and I, fifteen years ago, searched Cobb County for a place to retire. Well, I'm sure all of you are familiar with West Cobb. It's a, it's a little island out there that's, that's, just doesn't exist anywhere anymore. Peaceful, bucolic, retirees, families with children. It's, it's just, it's a great place to retire. The Family Dollar Store, I think, would, would, would not be able to contribute anything to our community. If you go down Brownsville Road going west, you run into a Family Dollar Store. If you go east in the other direction, lo and behold, what is it? Another Family Dollar Store. So, I'm trying in my mind to figure out why this community needs three Family Dollar Stores. I, I guess, being an old guy, I've been accused of standing in the way of progress, and, you know, people call three Family Dollar Stores and six CVSs progress. I just can't get my mind around that. The, the things that these girls have mentioned about traffic is, is really an important thing in my mind. We don't have tractor-trailer trucks in this neighborhood at all, period. You rarely see a tractor-trailer truck. And although the DOT may provide provisions for tractor-trailer trucks to get in and out of here, this is a two-lane road. There's no center line for turning. There's no provisions for people to make stops along the way. When the school bus stops, it backs traffic up for miles and miles, and that's okay. I mean, you know, the school bus has to be the school bus, so, but I know the way it's zoned, and, and I know it's available for commercial real estate. When we moved here, moved there, there was, they, Publix decided they wanted a grocery store there, and my goodness, it was only four miles to the next Publix, and I'm trying to figure out, why do I need a Publix in my backyard? And I, I can just envision children going from the subdivision into the, the Family Dollar Store in the summertime to get a popsicle, and they've got to cross Brownsville Road. It's a major thoroughfare in the Paulding County, major thoroughfare in the Paulding County. And these stay-at-home kids that live in these subdivisions, they're not going to let traffic slow them down. They're gonna, they're gonna go ahead and get their popsicles, and I think we're just creating a chance for disaster there. Not to mention the fact that, Mr. Terry, you mentioned a, a word that, a while back, that rang true with everybody I talked to, and that was compatibility. It just isn't compatible with our little community, and respectfully, I would like to, to ask you to turn down this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z twenty-four? Yeah, come on up. Got about a minute left.
Good afternoon. Robert Gaisakowski. My neighbors have pretty much expressed their concerns, and I'd just like to add a couple of things. Over the weekend, my wife and I went to all sixty homes in the Miller's Creek development. We have fifty on the Brownsville side and thirteen on the Pine Valley side. We were able to speak to forty of those residents. Out of the forty, two had no opinion if this goes through or not. The others were all opposed. The others were all opposed. That's how strong we are for this. And again, we do know that it's zoned for commercial, but with the traffic, and we've been there 16 years. And I'm retired now. I've been retired for five years. I see the traffic every day, because I'm on the corner where the church is, the first house. I've seen many accidents. We've had accidents right in front of our house. That intersection that you're looking at is a major thoroughfare between three different People are coming from Cobb, going into Paulding, Douglas, in the morning and the evening. It's, it's just a disaster. The other thing is, with the Dollar store, Family Dollar, doing some research, those standalone stores are very susceptible to crime, because they only have a few employees and very low security that they can count on. We have horse farms down the street. We have cattle farms down the street. That's what we bought the home for, for the area, peace of mind. And with this development, we're going to lose a lot of that. Property's been for sale for at least 10 years, and there's a reason for that, because most developers look at it and say it's not worth it. But now with the rezoning, the proposed rezoning, that's what they're looking at. But again, the majority of the people that live in this area, the homeowners who pay taxes, are opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, we're going to close the, this public comment portion, and it'll be back to this board. Gaunt, this is yours, I believe, so we'll let Mr. Porter lead our discussion.
Thank you, Mike. I think maybe I'll start off by having Jane Strickland from DOT come up.
Good afternoon. I'm Jane Strickland with DOT.
Thanks. And I know we're putting you on the spot, because we didn't really have any advance notice that we were going to have people here with concerns, so you probably haven't had a chance to research it, as you might have if we knew in advance. But can you speak a little bit about this intersection? Are you familiar with it and know of any potential improvements that are coming? And also, can you speak about, you know, what your recommendations are regarding the site to, to try and keep traffic coming in and out of it safe?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm familiar with the site, because I made a site visit, as we do for, for all the zoning cases, or most of them. I was not aware of the crash problem. I have a note to research it, and I want to confirm with our traffic operations to what their opinion is of the intersection. When I had forwarded the cases, they didn't flag anything to my attention, like they normally would if there's a problem with the driveway or intersection. I'm not aware of any future projects at this intersection either. Our recommendations were, we, we asked for a left-turn lane and a decel lane on Brownsville going into, for the ingress of the site, mainly because you are coming up to this intersection. We wanted to make sure those left-turning vehicles had their own lane. You know, we asked for, we asked for the Pine Valley driveway to be relocated further back from the intersection, and if it can't be, then to restrict it to a right-in, right-out.
Okay.
In terms of access, that's, that's pretty much the main one, other than curb, gutter, and sidewalk.
Okay. And you feel like those are going to address the, the concerns with added traffic coming in and out of the site?
For this site, yes. Now, if there's a underlying problem at the whole intersection, obviously, this is not going to fix that. So, but I will have a note, too, myself, to go back and research it.
Okay, so you'll have that ready before the BOC meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions for Jane? Okay, thank you. Well, looking at this case, it's, you know, and hearing all the concerns of the neighbors, and we appreciate everybody coming out, we always do when we have zoning cases, we appreciate all of that. You know, the, this is tough, because the property's already zoned. With the zoning they're requesting, except for that tiny little corner, that's really insignificant in the zoning. And it's what we refer to as entitled, to build a retail store there. Essentially, what they're coming in is asking for a different configuration of the property. And I think what was already zoned there was configured a little bit different with different plans for the property behind it, which is now a church. And I think that changes the way you're going to position a store or anything on this property. You know, I looked at this parcel, and at two acres and wedged between two roads, it's really tough to think of it being developed residentially. You know, I don't think you could get a whole lot of houses in there, and, and it would be that desirable for people to be on such a, a busy area, you know? Because I know one of the comments I saw in a letter was, "Keep it residential." Well, it's really not residential right now, so it's, and it's tough to take some, away somebody's commercial zoning, because we also have what we call a future land use map that's been planned out, and, and it has a long-term projection. And this particular parcel's in what we call a neighborhood activity center, which is planned for commercial. So not as, not only is the property being zoned for commercial, it's been planned for commercial for a long period of time. And honestly, to deny their request for rezoning to another commercial retail use that's really not any more intense than what it's already zoned for, would be awful tough for the county to defend, and I know where it would go, it would probably go straight to court if we tried to turn it down, and county would probably lose. So I, I just, in my mind, I don't see any way that we can turn down a reasonable request for commercial, because it's zoned commercial and et cetera. And, you know, in viewing this, I think it's pretty reasonable. They've offered to do a four-sided brick building, which, you know, we rarely see retail things coming in right off the bat saying, "We're going to do four-sided brick." Sometimes, you know, we have to push them to do that, but it's rare that, that they come up. And I think they stepped up, knowing that this is an unusually shaped parcel, being a triangle, and that that backside of the building was going to be very visible to, to areas, so they stepped up and said, "Hey, we're going to go ahead and do four-sided brick." And they've stipulated to landscaping. We just heard Mr. Moore add something that I had requested, which was heavy landscaping around the detention pond, so that it's not visible from, from the road. And, you know, in my mind, I just, you know, don't see how we can turn down the, the request. And I feel for the neighbors, but, you know, we have underlying conditions and state laws to think of as we, as we do these cases. And that's really my concern. Does anybody have any comments, or?
Yeah, just quickly, and I don't know whether John or maybe Mr. Flynn needs to answer this. We had one of the neighbors say, concerned about traffic. They were afraid a lot of people would be dashing in and out of this place to buy beer, gasoline, and lottery tickets. I don't think that's for sale in a Family Dollar store. You want to come up and confirm that? Well, I thought she was talking about this site. Are you, you're not going to sell any of that on this site?
No, no, we do not sell lottery tickets, alcohol, or gas.
Okay. Is most of your business during the day, not necessarily early in the morning, when there's school buses and children coming and going?
Correct. It's during peak hours, it's 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. But that's, you know, holiday season, high hours, typical hours are 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay, so when the buses are running and the children are coming and going, not likely to see a lot of traffic into and out of this area?
Correct. And we actually did a traffic study on this area, which is how we got to the left-turn lane and decel lane. So we, you know, feel like we have a pretty good idea of, you know, the impact that our store would create and how it would affect the surrounding area.
And to the, to the point of one lady, I believe it was Ms. Floyd or Ms. Williams, one of the others said, "There are no sidewalks in the area." DOT is going to require sidewalks on both of these roads, so that'll help a little bit. And of course, with the left-turn lane and the decel lane, hopefully that'll also help to mitigate any potential problems. So that's all I had.
I don't know if we had you state your name for the record?
Eric Flynn.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if we had that or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Gaunt.
I make the following motion regarding Z-24 to recommend approval, subject to all the following: All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. All stipulations in the letter from John H. Moore dated February 24th, not otherwise in conflict, with the following changes: In paragraph eight, replace wooden enclosure with brick-faced enclosure, and replace wooden screen gate with metal screen gate. And at the end of that, add dumpster enclosure to meet all county development standards. And then in paragraph 16, add heavy landscaping to be used in front of detention fencing to visually screen the fencing and detention pond from the roadway. And that's my motion.
Have a motion, we have a second. Will the landscaped, I mean, the detention pond area be fenced?
Yes, they're required to.
Okay, all right, so we got that covered. Anybody else have discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, good deal. Thank you very much. John, what's next? Okay, we have some minutes to approve. Folks, that takes care of our zoning cases. Thank you all for your patience. We do have some minutes from February 10th and also February 22nd that we're in possession of. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Adopted, as presented. Thank you very much. Go vote, people, go vote.